Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, September 7, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please, Tamara.
Councilmember Starr?
Here.
Brecky?
Erickson?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Nightzert?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
We are honored tonight to have Pastor Erica Barco with us from the Table Ministry. She's pinch hitting. It was a last-minute ad, so thanks for making it work with your schedule. She's going to give our invocation, so I'd ask that you stand for that, and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, good evening to all of you, and before I start, I just wanted to thank all of you. Being a leader myself, I know how selfless it can be and how much of a family affair it can be, but know that you're being prayed over, that you're so appreciated by our little corner pocket of southwest Sioux Falls, and we're just grateful. We're grateful to be able to raise our family here and to start a church here and all of that, and I was looking through each week. I like to see what events are happening in Sioux Falls and figure out where I can bring my family, and I saw that this weekend is Durin Fest. Yeah, that's awesome, right? And I was going to tell you a joke, but it was the worst. Did I? Yeah, see?
I get it.
I had to do that just for Christie, so, okay, friends, let us pray. Dear Jesus, tonight we lift up to you, our local leaders. We pray for our mayor, our city council, men and women, our county workers, our police officers, our judges, and all who serve our local communities. Strengthen them with wisdom and grace for the heavy burdens they carry, and that even though they may not know what to do in tough times, let their eyes be fixed on you. May they manage their teams and projects with love, fairness, and humility. Keep their hearts pure and their eyes turned toward your face as they work in the best interests of the people they are called to serve, the people of Sioux Falls. Bring them understanding, bring them comfort, bring them peace. We thank you, Lord, for granting all of your faithfulness to our city leaders. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Who's the worst? That's got a good sound to it. All right, we'll move on to item four. That's approval of our consent agenda. Any changes or motions to be made on that?
Mr. Mayor, I did have our budget analyst send out a couple of requests that I was going to pull from this item. I think Director Cotter got back to me and answered my questions, and I got the answers that I needed, so I'm not going to pull those items tonight.
All right. Any other councillors have any items you want to consider pulling tonight? Look for a motion.
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by, was that Selberg?
That was.
First, all right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. We'll skip ahead to item 24. That's our regular agenda. Look for a motion to approve that, please.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Erickson.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, councillor Jensen.
I'd like to make a motion to amend by placing Agenda Item 54 immediately before Agenda Item 36, Agenda Item 51 immediately after Agenda Item 44, Agenda Item 52 immediately before Agenda Item 40, and Agenda Items 45 through 50 and 53 immediately after Agenda Item 40.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Erickson. You want to speak to that at all, or?
Just kind of cleans up and sets the stage for the night on our agenda items, so we can move forward in an orderly way. Thank you.
Sounds good. Any other discussion on that motion? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr?
No.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes seven to one. Back to our main motion as amended. Any other amendments to make here? All right, here and now, let's take a vote on the main motion as amended.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Before we move on here, just want to review public input for agenda items. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration at that time only. During general public input, the comments will be limited to no more than three minutes per person, and comments are limited to topics that do not involve items that we talked about on the agenda earlier in the evening. So with that being said, we'll move on to item 25.
Item 25 is a transfer of 2021 retail liquor license from Village River Group LLC, Village on the River, 140 East 10th Street, to Sioux Falls Lodging Group LLC, Homewood Suites, 3620 West Devera Drive. Item 26 is a transfer of 2021 retail liquor license from Dave &amp; Buster's of South Dakota Incorporated, Dave &amp; Buster's 2690 South Loraine Place, to Kwan Holdings Incorporated, Crown Casino Cliff, 902 South Cliff Avenue, with conditional use permit 2010-0205 being approved on March 3, 2010. 27 is a special one-day malt beverage license for Christ the King Church and School, 1801 South Lake Avenue, for a picnic on September 11, 2021. Item 28 is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Ram Cota Companies Incorporated to be operated at Avera Behavioral Health, 4400 West 69th Street, for a network event on September 16, 2021. Item 29 is a special one-day liquor license for T-Slot Incorporated to be operated at Open Space, 6212 South Pinnacle Place, for a wedding on September 18, 2021. Item 30 is a special one-day liquor license for T-Slot Incorporated to be operated at Kirkcabe Over Stadium, 2700 South Lake Avenue, for football games on September 18, October 9, 30, and November 13, 2021. Item 31 is a special one-day liquor license for T-Slot Incorporated to be operated at JJ's Axes and Ales, 3016 West 57th Street, for a class reunion on September 18, 2021. Item 32 is a special one-day wine licenses for downtown Sioux Falls to be operated at the following locations: 8th and Railroad Center, 401 East 8th Street, Suite 200A, American State Bank, 223 South Phillips Avenue, Atoli Salon and Spa, 317 South Phillips Avenue, Becktoe Jewelry, 325 South Phillips Avenue, Chelsea's Boutique, 220 South Phillips Avenue, Envive Chiropractic, 412 South 1st Avenue, Faith Through Frames, 218 West 13th Street, Suite 109, Friends of SDVP, 601 North Phillips Avenue, Great Outdoor Store, 201 East 10th Street, Hannah Harvest, 421 North Phillips Avenue, Home Porch Gifts, 217 South Phillips Avenue, Hotel on Phillips, 100 North Phillips Avenue, and Toxabakes, 421 North Phillips Avenue, JH &amp; Sons, 216 South Phillips Avenue, JLG Architects, 232 South Main Avenue, Laura Bell's, 206 South Phillips Avenue, Mint + Basil, 207 South Phillips Avenue, MK Threads, 222 South Phillips Avenue, Prairie Cocoa and Confections, 401 East 8th Street, Rayfield's Art and Framing, 431 North Phillips Avenue, Say Anything Jewelry, 225 South Phillips Avenue, Simply Perfect, 401 East 8th Street, Suite 108, Sioux Empire Community Theater, 315 North Phillips Avenue, and Sticks &amp; Steel, 401 East 8th Street, Suite 118, for Art and Wine Walk on October 1, 2021. Item 33 is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Community Indoor Tennis Center Incorporated, 4210 North Bob Holler Drive, for a fundraiser on November 5, 2021. Item 34 is a special one-day liquor license for T-Slot Incorporated to be operated at the Sanford Event Barn, 2510 East 54th Street North, for weddings on October 2, 9, and 16, 2021. Item 35 is a special one-day liquor license for T-Slot Incorporated to be operated at the Augustana University President's House, 2817 South Grange Avenue, for a class reunion on October 7, 2021.
Jamie, good evening.
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions that you have on items 25 through 35.
All right, thank you, Jamie. Anyone from the public here to speak on items 25 to 35, any of those? Councillors, do you have any questions for Jamie on any of these tonight?
Move approval.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale to approve these items. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Move to item 54, which was moved by amendment.
Item 54 is a resolution approving the 2021-2022 budget for the Sioux Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau Business Improvement District. Sponsor is the mayor.
Okay, hi, there you are. Come on up here, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor and councillor. Thank you for letting me present to you this afternoon. We would request your approval of the budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public who would like to speak to item 54? All right, councillor, do you have any questions for Terry Ellis Schmidt from Experience Sioux Falls on the budget, I believe, presented at the informational today?
Move to approve, Erickson. Second, Brecky.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Brecky to approve item 54. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move to item 36.
Item 36 is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by revising Section 37.038, lands included in rural service district. The rural service district shall include only those platted or unplatted lands, as in the judgment of the city council or rural in character, are used or usable for agricultural agriculture, and are not developed for commercial, industrial, or urban residential purposes. The rural service district may include lands that are not contiguous to one another. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, mayor and city councillor. Jason Bieber with Planning and Development Services. As Tamara indicated, these are properties that are rural in nature and used for agricultural purposes. Therefore, they are taxed at a different rate than properties that are used for commercial, industrial, or urban residential uses. This is the current map of the properties that are in the rural service district. We're coming before you today to do some changes. The properties in the orange will be removed from the rural service district, excuse me. They've either been developed or platted separately, and the properties in yellow are just, the legal description is being changed because they've been platted since they were originally included in the rural service district.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic tonight? All right, councillor, got any questions for Jason here? Move approval?
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's take a vote, then.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 37.
Item 37 is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located southeast of West 85th Street and South Pinewood Avenue from the REC Recreation District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District, number 14729, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicants, 85th Street Homes LLC, Michael Bender.
The applicant here is Michael Bender. The owner is Woods Estates Development. It's located at the southeast corner of West 85th Street and South Pinewood Avenue. It's about .3 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to rezone it all as RS Single Family and then sell the property.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public would like to speak to this item here? Councillor, got any questions on this one tonight?
Move approval. Nightzert?
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Nightzert, seconded by Jensen to approve item 37. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote on that.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 38 is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located southeast of West Madison Street and North Ebenezer Avenue from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the I-1 Light Industrial District, number 14734, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, Willitsen Lund Engineering Corp., Erickson Willitsen.
The applicant here is Eric Willitsen. The owner is Legacy LLP. It's located south of West Madison Street and east of North Ebenezer Avenue. It's about 16.7 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing a future light industrial development on the property.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Councillor, any questions here?
I have one question, mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you talk a little bit about the drainage on this property? Because I know it's kind of been, this was something that I may or may not have had lots of questions on in the past, and it's kind of been, you know, we would hope that there'd be one large detention pond, and it just was not able to be done. So then, what resulted was each parcel had to have their own little teeny-tiny detention pond, which, does that make sense or not? We could argue about that all day long or discuss it all day long. Tell me where the detention is on this. It's kind of just unfortunate that it wasn't able to be done all at one time, but I get it. So where's the detention?
I can't answer that exactly because I'm not aware of that right now. Just remember with these specific developments, this is one of the first starts of it. We still got development engineering plans to go through, we'll have construction plans, and then they got to plat and all that stuff. So our drainage engineering team will continue to look at this and make sure it meets the required drainage requirements, so.
And I know it always meets it, and I get that, but I'm certainly interested to see where that will land with this particular area, because it is a, it's a pretty wet area.
And I can have definitely talk to our drainage engineers tomorrow and get back to you.
Yeah, no problem. And when we get to the next phase, that's fine, too. I'm probably a little early on that, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Brecky to approve item 38. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 39 is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of West Maple Street and west of North Valley View Road from the AG Agricultural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban, and CN Conservation Districts, number 14746, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, Norman Engineering Incorporated, Aaron Norman.
The applicant here is Aaron Norman. The owner is Eric Christianson. It's located south of West Maple Street and west of North Valley View Road, just south of McGovern Middle School. It's about 40 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing single, twin, and townhome residential development.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak to item 39? Councillor, got any questions on this one? Move approval?
Move, Erickson. Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion here? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 52, which was moved by amendment.
Item 52 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Jefferson Heights Second Edition, 14745, 2021. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, Norman Engineering, Aaron Norman.
This is the preliminary subdivision plan that goes along with the rezoning that we just heard. It's 40 acres in size, just south of that McGovern Middle School, and they're looking at constructing a future single, twin, and townhome residential development.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 52? Councillor, got any questions here? For a motion?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 40.
Item 40 is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 2301 North Marion Road from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban, LW Live Work, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, and CN Conservation Districts, to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, LW Live Work, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban, and RS Single Family Residential Suburban Districts, number 14774, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, Norman Engineering Incorporated, Aaron Norman.
This is also an application by Aaron Norman, and the owner is also Eric Christianson. This one is located just to the east of the development that we just talked about. It's about 152 acres in size. The purpose of this is they're just doing some minor zoning boundary adjustments throughout their development.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who wants to speak on item 40 here? Councillor, got any questions on this one?
Move approval. Nightzert?
Second, Jensen.
Okay, motion by Nightzert, seconded by Jensen to approve item 40. Any discussion there? All right, call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move to item 45.
Item 45 is a first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, repealing ordinance 11320 and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to sign the Underground Electric Easement and Agreement and to grant an easement to CommNet Cellular Incorporated, doing business as Verizon Wireless within McKennan Park. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 14, 2021. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Jerry.
Good evening, mayor and councillor. Jerry, Public Works, Light Power and Traffic. I'm going to speak on the next five items, as they're all related to easements in the parks for Verizon Small Cells. Our first item is, not there. Okay, so this all came with Small Cells 5G through Verizon. We have a master license agreement between the city and Verizon, and it includes both the city right-of-way and the parks, and these are just going on city light poles, they're going on parks light poles, and these easements allow them into our parks. So the first one is in McKennan Park. This is actually basically repealing the first easement that went through. It wasn't, the exhibit wasn't clear. We didn't get the right background and items like that, so we're repealing it. And then 46 brings it back with all the corrections needed to make it right. And then the next three are in Falls Park. The first one up here is by the watch station over there on the east side. It's basically coming off of 6th Street, I believe, and following the road and going all the way to the Small Cell location. And then the next one is going up by the Farmer's Market, and then the next one after that is going farther to the south over by the parking area within middle Falls Park to cover that area. So these four are for basically easements in the parks for Small Cells.
All right, thanks, Jerry. Anyone who would like to speak to item 45 here? Councillor, any questions for Jerry on this?
Move approval?
Second, Kylie.
Okay, motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie. That's to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 14. Any discussion there? Let's take a vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Item 46.
Item 46 is a first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to sign the Underground Electric Easement and Agreement and to grant an easement to CommNet Cellular Incorporated, doing business as Verizon Wireless within McKennan Park. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 14, 2021. Sponsor is the mayor.
All right, Jerry, any new information on that? You covered it all in the first presentation, right?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
All right, anyone here to speak on item 46? All right, councillors, any questions for Jerry here? Look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 14.
So move, Jensen.
Second, Kylie.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's take a vote there, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Item 47.
Item 47 is a first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to sign the Underground Electric Easement and Agreement and to grant an easement to CommNet Cellular Incorporated, doing business as Verizon Wireless within Falls Park, site name SDSFA DTSF, North 020. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 14, 2021. Sponsor is the mayor.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on 47? Councillors, any questions on this one?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 14. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 48, please.
Item 48 is a first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to sign the Underground Electric Easement and Agreement and to grant an easement to CommNet Cellular Incorporated, doing business as Verizon Wireless within Falls Park, site name SDSFA DTSF, North 018. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 14, 2021. Sponsor is the mayor.
All right, anyone here to speak on 48? Councillor, any questions? All right, anyone here to speak on forty-eight? Counsel, any questions?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September fourteen on this item. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
And item forty-nine, please.
Item forty-nine is first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to sign the underground electric easement and agreement and to grant an easement to CommNet Cellular Incorporated, doing business as Verizon Wireless within Falls Park. Site name SDSFA DTSF North zero twenty-one. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Sponsor is the mayor.
Yeah, I should have announced, item forty-eight passed eight to zero. Item forty-nine, anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, any questions on this one?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September fourteen for this item. Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We'll move to item fifty.
Item fifty is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the naming of a facility space on public property. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hi, Diane.
Good evening. Hi, Diane Decore with Planning Development Services. The naming committee met on August twentieth to review the application for the Chief Burns Range out at the Public Safety Training Center. The mayor was the applicant for it, and as you might guess, it was approved unanimously. And I can answer any questions or turn it over to the mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Diane. I will speak to this item. So, yeah, in front of you is a naming opportunity for Chief Matt Burns for the range at the Public Safety Training Center. As you know, our chief retired in July of this year after twenty-five-plus years of service to the PD. Chief Burns was the chief since two thousand fifteen. I know you all in the council got to know the chief fairly well. Chief was in the office when I took office and can say with a lot of certainty that Matt is one of the most upright, outstanding, strong, moral leaders I've ever worked with. He's an incredible police chief. And while Chief Toomeh is doing a great job, Chief Burns has left some very, very large shoes to fill. So when we started to look at the chief's legacy, Matt is known within the ranks of Sioux Falls PD for his tactical munitions work over the years. And when Matt was asked about some of the projects that he was most proud of, obviously, the Public Safety Training Center is one of those fifty-million-dollar campus that we're just now seeing bids on for that project. He talked about the Southwest report to work location, but also about our collaboration with the South Dakota Attorney General's Office and the law enforcement training academy that we now have in Sioux Falls, which has, for the first two classes, has been absolutely instrumental in ensuring that we get more officers trained quickly and more effectively and get them on the streets quicker. And Matt also during his time as a chief was instrumental in forming our Community Resource Officer Program, which a lot of communities look to and ask us about our community policing efforts, community ambassador team, which has also been very successful, and also starting our Mobile Field Force Program, which we had to put into action last May during the riots here in Sioux Falls. The average shelf life of a chief is about three years right now in America. It's about how long a chief stays in the chair, just typically because your chief ends up being a fall guy in the community a lot. If something's wrong, there's a crime, there's high crime, there's an officer commits maybe an infraction, a lot of times the chief takes the fall for that. And so for Matt to be in the chair for six years and absolutely having left the department better than he found it, I thought it was very fitting to name this single building on the range after Chief Matt Burns, knowing his background and his love for munitions and his respect in the department as kind of a munitions leader. So that is the item we're bringing forward to you tonight for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? You have up to three minutes.
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. I don't have an issue with naming public buildings after public servants. I think that's a wonderful thing. I've always gone by a rule, though, that you should wait for someone to pass away before you name them after that. So why is that? It isn't saying to be disrespectful to that person while they're still alive. It's the fact that certain things can happen while they're alive, even though they might not be working for the city anymore. Want you to think about this. What if we would have named a building after our last fire chief? Would we have repealed that? I think we would have. The reason you should wait for someone to be dead, sorry to use that terminology, but basically it is, we have no idea what people will do, as we found out with our previous fire chief. And I tell all organizations this, while it's an honor to name someone while they're still alive, it's always probably a good idea to wait until they've passed away. And our previous fire chief is a prime, prime example of somebody doing something after the fact. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, counselors, are there questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Starr.
Yeah, if I can, Mr. Mayor, I guess I have a question. Do we have an overall master plan or a strategic plan of naming operations or namings for the new Public Safety Training Center? Are there other opportunities? What are we looking at, naming the entire facility? What's the overall plan?
Sure, yeah, great question. And actually, considering the cost escalations we've seen out there, we've had several meetings with companies, donors, to try and secure title naming rights to that facility. Been unsuccessful in that thus far, but I have put on a development hat and have been working to try and find a way to monetize the naming rights. There's still some opportunities out there, but I'll be honest, an aquatic center, a premier center gets a lot more bang for someone's buck than a public safety training center that no one ever sees unless you're actually a cop to go out there. I will say that, and I'm sure you all know, on August, our recent naming committee ordinance we recently changed, I think you brought that forward, Counselor Starr, to allow for those who are alive to still be honored, allowing rank as well to be used in the naming, thus the Chief Matt Burns Range. So I want to thank you for doing that, which has allowed us to bring this forward.
Thank you.
Are there other questions, counselors? Is there a motion to set a second, date of second reading for Tuesday, September twenty-first?
So moved.
Second, Erickson.
Moved by Kylie, seconded by Erickson. We get a real call vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right, thank you, Council Chair. Sale, we'll move to our next item, please.
Item fifty-three is a resolution approving the special assessment role for the Main Street Business Improvement District in the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Powers.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Dustin Powers, Planning and Development Services. Item fifty-three is requesting support for a special assessment levy for the Main Street Business Improvement District. The area is identified in the screen outlined in yellow. It's our current downtown boundaries. It identifies an area of approximately four-hundred-and-fifty acres. In this area, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine properties would be assessed through the resolution here tonight. Funds generated by the Business Improvement District are administered through downtown Sioux Falls. Joe Bachelor with downtown Sioux Falls is here this evening and will come up following myself to give you an idea and briefly discuss some of the services provided through the Business Improvement District assessment. A couple of quick items to note is the resolution, again, you're voting on here tonight, is a cumulative assessment of one-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and twenty-six cents across those two-hundred-and-twenty-nine properties. The maximum assessment any one property pays is seventeen hundred dollars. The Main Street bid has been in place since nineteen eighty-nine, so this is the thirty-second year requesting support for the assessment levy. Notices of hearing were published twice on July thirtieth as well as August sixth. In addition, each property owner was sent a notice with a copy of the hearing here tonight, as well as their amount that they would be assessed on August fourth. And then we do have a Main Street Business Improvement District Board that also reviewed this assessment, and they unanimously recommended approval on August nineteenth of this year for your consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe to briefly discuss the services provided by the bid.
All right, thanks, Dustin. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening. Joe Bachelor with downtown Sioux Falls. The, as Mr. Powers said, the bid has been around for over thirty years. And with DTSF, what we do is we use those funds to make sure that downtown is a clean, safe, beautiful, and welcoming place. We sweep the sidewalks, enough sidewalks to go from Sioux Falls to New York City. We string up enough holiday lights in the wintertime to stretch from downtown to Rowena, which is eight miles, in case you were wondering. We hope to make it to Larchwood someday. We are continually adding flowers every year. You know, that might be something that isn't noticeable at first blush, but if you were to take them away, you certainly would notice them. We have about a hundred and twenty flower baskets and about a hundred and ten flower planters that we water on a daily basis in the summertime. New this year is an ambassador program that we launched, and with that, we have hired a public space coordinator. And he has had shy of a thousand interactions with the general public, whether those are tourists or panhandlers or homeless population. And he's made quite an impact so far. There's one incident just last week where there was a gentleman that was brought to the link who was struggling because of, you know, high alcohol content, and the person started choking, and our ambassador helped save that person's life. And so that's a program that we want to expand, that we think would make a huge difference with the downtown experience. And so with that, you know, just wanted to provide you with an overview of the different kinds of activities that we use those funds for, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Joe. All right, anyone from the public would like to speak on item fifty-three here tonight?
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. While those are all great things to invest in downtown, I remember several years ago, there was a downtown business owner that moved here from Soho in New York City, and he was approached by downtown Sioux Falls to join the organization. And he told, they told him about the tax and the membership fees. And he said, well, what do I get for that besides marketing and flowers? And he didn't really get much of an answer. And he says, well, I belong to the Soho Business District, and we paid membership fees, and we got business insurance. We had an option to provide health care to our, or health insurance to our employees, because we were small businesses. We could go in on a group. They got small business loans to expand their business. And of course, they got marketing, which downtown Sioux Falls does now, and some of the other amenities. I would like to see downtown Sioux Falls actually explore some of these things. As, like I said, as you know, many of the downtown business owners are very small business owners. They, you know, for them to pay health insurance for their employees is very difficult, or to get business insurance, or, you know, small business loans and stuff like that. So while I'm not opposed to this tax, because obviously everyone's paying it, whether they like it or not, I think it should be expanded from marketing and flowers to actually benefiting the business owners and their employees. I've always been a person that doesn't believe in the trickle-down. I always believe you start at the bottom. And I think you should really start with the business owners first and see what you can do for their employees. That it's, and I can tell you from someone who's worked downtown, it's difficult to work downtown. There's not parking, or you have to pay for your parking. There's, you know, your hours are very strange. There's a lot of logistics with that. So I would really like to see downtown Sioux Falls start exploring actually helping the employers and their employees, because it's a good thing to do.
Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? Counselors, you got any questions for Dustin or for Joe? Counselor Nightzert, go ahead.
I have one for Joe. First of all, the wraps on the boxes look fantastic. Is that was something that was driven by your organization? Is that right, or no?
We were a part of that, yeah. That was a collaboration between DTSF, the Sioux Falls Arts Council, and the city.
Yeah, really cool.
Yeah, we're still putting some finishing touches on it. It should be wrapped up here, no pun intended.
No pun intended.
Here in about another week, so.
Okay. And I'm curious, as an organization, do you have like a steering committee or something like the Chamber does in terms of like issue advocacy? When, like, so when something like, when we see like the scooters or even potentially like regulations related to COVID or parking, that, you know, where you would take official positions and be coming in front of us?
Yes, so I'm glad you asked. We have our downtown development committee, and our downtown development committee recently finalized a policy statement. And so I'll be forwarding that on to all the city counselors. And we speak to issues from economic development to arts, culture, and entertainment, to mobility, and parking. So it's something that we look to make more of a presence on in terms of the issues that affect downtown, and that's our guiding document. So I'll be sharing that out with all of you.
Perfect. I think there's a place where, you know, as an organization, you know, maybe appropriate for you to take a position representing the downtown membership on things that are very impactful potentially in terms of policies that we may enact. So look forward to it. Thanks.
Other questions for Joe while we got him here? All right, any other questions for Dustin? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve this item.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Nightzert.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Nightzert to approve item fifty-three. Any discussion on the council on this one? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. We'll move to item forty-one.
Item forty-one is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the Sioux Falls, South Dakota by adopting medical cannabis zoning regulations. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening. This is our zoning ordinance component for the city of Sioux Falls of our proposed cannabis ordinances tonight. Just to give you an idea, the city of Sioux Falls is proposing to allow two of the four cannabis uses. That would be a dispensary and testing facility. We are proposing to allow dispensaries in the C two, C three, C four districts. Those are our commercial districts. The S two P U D, which would be a general institutional district, the P O P U D, which is one of our pedestrian-oriented land use development. An example would be Lake Lorraine, and then our light industrial districts. Testing facilities, we're proposing in all those same districts and also in the I two zoning districts. Just some examples would be Foundation Park would be zoned I two. Separation distance, we are proposing the sense, between sensitive land use at a thousand feet. So a dispensary would have to be a thousand feet from a single-family townhome, church, daycare, school, and public use facility. And then also between other dispensaries and testing facilities, they would need to meet a thousand feet between each of those. Just to give you an idea of how we do separation distance, how we measure, it's the outside wall of the tenant space to the property line of the sensitive land use. There is also in the ordinance, a conditional use permit option for the medical cannabis dispensary or testing facility, and that would allow you to go down to five hundred to nine hundred and ninety-nine feet between facilities from sensitive land uses. You would need then to go to the Planning Commission for a conditional use permit that would need to be approved by them and possibly if it was appealed to the city council. Some of those standards for approval would need to be enhanced barriers, aesthetic topography, et cetera, to make sure that we're still separating the cannabis facilities from those sensitive land uses in the ordinance. And there would not be a COP option for distances between dispensaries or testing facilities. They would always have to meet those thousand-foot requirements. This would be a map of our potential medical cannabis dispensary locations within the city. As you can see, it shows the thousand foot in the dark green, and then the light green would be your conditional use permit options. This would be our proposal for the medical testing facilities. Pretty similar map, but it does include that area up in Foundation Park and also some areas on the east side of Sioux Falls that are some heavy industrial areas. So be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
Good evening, sir.
Dennis Algen, Sioux Falls. Well, I'm not exactly excited about anything about pot. And most of the propaganda that you've heard deals with money that you're going to make in taxes and whatnot for pot. But there's a work cost, and I believe that I would put a dispensary maybe several thousand feet from some of these sensitive areas. Make it a little bit hard to get to, because there's big items that are coming up that we don't talk about very often. One of them is cost of the economy. The employers and employment agencies are talking about people not being able to pass drug tests as high as thirty percent. And these are often skilled people. What effect does it have on the economy when skilled workers are sitting on the curb high on pot, and they can't get a job because they didn't have enough sense enough to realize that this stuff stays in your system for thirty days or more? And more and more industries are requiring, that's been developing since nineteen ninety, more and more industries are requiring drug tests, especially if you handle anything that's dangerous. That can be medical workers, police, someone that handles a saw, a backhoe, a truck, a carpenter working with dangerous tools. If you forget yourself and go out on a Saturday night and somebody says, take a whiff of some pot, Monday morning, you can be out of a job, because these tests are done in various ways randomly. Or if you get into an incident... Or if you get into an incident where you break something, you're off to take a test. So, what effect is it having? We got all these jobs, jobs, jobs we can't fill. Skilled workers. So, you don't want to make this convenient, especially from the person selling the pot is probably not going to tell you, be careful. If you've got a job running a backhoe or you're doing something dangerous, you might be out of a job on Monday. And oh, no, they won't tell them that. You could put that in the ordinance and require that there be a little education before you sell somebody that pot. The other thing is the piggyback effect. You know, since we've been handled at the national level so incompetently for the last eight, six, seven, eight months, we now have wide open borders. And what do you think the drug dealers, do they care about American health? No, they're working with Chinese labs to inject into what they sell. And, and they're, my understanding is they can even put a little fentanyl in any type of marijuana. Fentanyl does brain damage. And it can do brain damage to the effect that you're disabled for the rest of your life. At least disabled from the standpoint of not being able to perform to the level that you should be. So, you know, I'm just not excited about anything about pot. Where's the FDA and where's the federal government? You know, this thing confuses me, between recreational and medical. Okay? Seems to me the FDA needs to be doing some long-term studies, just like medicine for COVID. To determine and control what in the world is medical marijuana? Is it CBD? Apparently not. That's already for sale all over the place. So, I don't know. But you can squeeze them a little on the ordinances. Don't put them a thousand feet away from a school. Come on. Go for five, six, ten thousand feet. Get them out there in a corner someplace where if they really legitimately need the medicine, they can get it. If it really is medical. If it really is medical. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dennis. Anyone else here to speak on this tonight?
Hey, folks.
Good evening.
Ned Horstedt with the Cannabis Industry Association of South Dakota. Apologize for the giant map. I made it for the back room here, but I know we've got two ordinances to speak a little bit about. So, I'll talk just a little bit to, to issues that we have with the zoning ordinance. As has been discussed, we're looking at a thousand feet between dispensaries and a thousand feet with five hundred possible for conditional use. The city produced this map. This should be familiar to everyone up here. What I did, as you might remember from last meeting, was put red in the areas that was owned by the city or the state. And then blue in areas that are almost a hundred percent certain to never allow a dispensary. So, that includes areas like the Empire Mall, which is also not allowed through their own policies. Augustana College, Sanford and Avera's campuses and the ground that they've purchased. I've talked to folks in the finance departments at both places. They're not interested in selling any ground to allow use here. So, what I've done here for scale, just to give you an idea, is, you know, a quarter represents roughly a thousand feet. So, what I'm getting at here is you have de facto caps. We think it'd be much more appropriate to allow access for folks throughout the city. There are probably some councilors up here that will not even have a dispensary in their district for some city that, that voted for this by over seventy-five percent. That seems a little bit crazy to us, but let's use this quarter here. You know, you can see there's one. That takes that out. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, uh, let's see, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. You might have, you might have thirty maybe possibly. Counselor Knight said that the city looked at this and said sixty might be the upper limit. I imagine that's after, or before you even take out the land that, that would not qualify. So, we think that that's a little extensive from a zoning perspective. All right, I'm good with this. Thank you. So, what, what you've done here is created de facto caps, which is much better than a hard cap. I know that that's in the next ordinance, so I won't get into that too much. The other piece that is a huge issue and I think should be for everyone, there's been very, very little public discourse on this piece and that is an outright ban on over half of the industry. As many of you know, there are four licensing types under IM twenty-six, now thirty-four twenty-G. There's cultivation, there's product manufacturing, there's testing, and there are dispensaries. Product manufacturing can mean multiple things and there will be product manufacturers that, that transfer product amongst themselves. One would be extraction, so you extract the cannabis product into an oil. And then they would typically sell that to a dispensary or package it or, or the other thing that they can do is take that oil and sell, sell it to another product manufacturer. So, I've talked to a couple dozen residents within the City of Sioux Falls that would really like to set up like a kitchen so they can make their own edibles. There's no volatile chemicals. They simply take the oil. They need to follow the Department of Health's strict licensing process and would need to follow the, the ordinances here. But outright banning this is very bad for entrepreneurs. There are many here that, that would like to do that. And I think in the, the ci, the state's largest city to outright ban that much of the industry is extremely short-sighted. I think that's about all that I have on the zoning ordinance. I'll, I'll talk to y'all here on the licensing ordinance next. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ned. Anyone else here to speak on this? Please come forward.
Scott Erstman, Sioux Falls. Just wanted to address something with the first speaker about the drug testing and stuff. We are a right-to-work state. I know he just recently moved here. He might not know that. That means workers have no rights. My boss can fire me for drinking a glass of milk at my desk. This is a reason why Governor Noem hasn't told businesses they cannot mandate vaccinations because she knows it would throw a wrench into the right-to-work laws in our state, which favor businesses over employees. My employer can fire me for anything, drug test or not. As for, I'm going to give you a little history lesson about marijuana. Most people don't know why marijuana was decriminalized and I'll tell you why. Prohibition. Prohibition ended. The czar of prohibition needed something to do. He convinced lawmakers that black men smoking marijuana were raping white women. And so, he determined that marijuana was a dangerous drug. Almost a hundred years ago, we, we criminalized marijuana over falsehoods and baloney. And I get so tired, I can't believe in 2021, thousands of years this plant has been around and people have smoked it, used it. Medicine, recreational. It's not dangerous, folks. You know, I wouldn't blow it in my cat's face. I wouldn't give it to a toddler. But if you're an adult, it's not dangerous. It's one of the most unbelievably non-dangerous drugs probably out there. If alcohol was presented on the market tomorrow, it would be considered a narcotic. Marijuana is not a narcotic. It is a plant that makes you feel good when you use it. That's it. UK Medical Association did a study of marijuana. They determined they found nobody has ever overdosed or died directly from using marijuana. It is the least dangerous drug you can even possibly imagine and was criminalized due to race, racism. So, dangerous? Not. And anybody who argues that doesn't know what the hell they're talking about. As for this ordinance and itself, I'm not going to talk on the second one. I'm just going to tell you right now. This thing is such a mess. I went and read the amendments today. Wow. What a piece of garbage. How do you get this far in the process and have that much, many amendments? I told you from the beginning, you didn't let the public in on forming this. You did even let most of the council in on forming this. You had meetings at breakfast at the library where you had to pay for parking. And you wonder why it's a piece of crap now. My opinion is, all you really needed to do to make itself easy on you and easy on the public is pass something that says, we will follow state law when state law goes into effect. If you need to make ordinances in, then you make ordinances in. Because they're going to change a bunch of stuff anyway. So, what's the point, you know? But this is what happens when you have a government that lies to you about a drug that's not dangerous, tells you it's dangerous, thinks you have to have a huge education program, when all you got to do is Google marijuana and find out all kinds of things about it. Did you know the USS Constitution sales were made from hemp? That's a derivative of marijuana. Something fun fact you'd find out about it. It's amazing plant. It's been used for thousands of years. So, number one, you have a government that's lying to you about the dangers of marijuana. And number two, you don't have any open government or public, or transportation with the public. The public had no bit informing this. None whatsoever. The council, most of the council had nothing to do with this. Why are we running government this way? I, I, I'm baffled by it. I, I don't understand that the benefits of open and transparent government are huge. It saves the public money. It makes the public happy. You get the things that the public wants. Doing things behind closed doors, you could read history books about this. I'm not going to bring up names. But this has been done in the past and it's always ended very terribly. You got to stop doing this. I don't care if it's about marijuana. I don't care if it's about mask mandates. You got to start involving the public. You have the power to do it. Just do it.
Anyone else here to speak tonight on this item? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Nice to see you all again. I know it's not my first time here, so you're well aware. I really care about this issue. It all started with my grandmother.
Say your name for the record.
Oh, I should know that, Mayor. I apologize. Emmett Reisstrafer, nine fifteen South Fourth Avenue. So, this started for me with my grandmother when I was a young child and I had found out that cannabis helped her during her cancer treatment. So, I've always looked at it a bit differently. I realize there's folks in our community, one who spoke earlier, that looks at this a lot differently than me. I think that's okay. When I think about this ordinance and, and how this fits into the big picture, I have to repeat the same thing I asked for a few weeks ago, which is I think we need a permanent commission or board that will tackle this issue because it's going to be back again and again. We know the Supreme Court's going to rule. So, my comments tonight about this is about the context of how this fits in going forward. When I really boil this down, marijuana, we come from an era of prohibition, which meant the government decided a long time ago, this substance is not allowed. If you're caught with it, you're arrested and you're put in jail. The vast majority of government bodies across the country and even the world have recognized that past era and that policy approach did not work. So, where are we going? We are going towards a regulated market. Because no matter how many people you put in jail, you cannot stop the commerce of it. And under a scenario of full prohibition, that means more crime, more violence, and like the first speaker said, no control over what's going into the product. So, again, context, where are we going from that? Now, most people, and seventy-eight percent of Americans now almost, think we need to move away from prohibition towards a system of regulation. This ordinance is a first step in that direction and I am incredibly grateful that we've gotten that far. And Counselor Knight, we've had meetings that were productive. And I know I've complained and others have complained, but the task force has moved the ball forward. Obviously, I don't think it's far enough, but it's still a step in the right direction. So, with that said, if the goal for most of us, the voters, the majority of South Dakota voters, a majority of Americans, is to move towards a regulated market, whether it's sold medically or recreationally, to me, it's a regulated market at the end of the day. We need to make sure that regulated market works. So, what I'm really asking you to think about tonight is, first of all, thank you for moving us closer towards what the people want, is a regulated market. But how can we make sure that regulated market works? I know we've been up here myself many times and have said, we don't think this quite works because it's too restrictive. If there's not enough legal participants in the regulated market, that black market that that gentleman mentioned, open borders, fentanyl, that's who controls the market. We can't make the market go away when twelve percent of South Dakotans are using cannabis regularly, which is what the federal government estimates. So, let's take control of that market and let this conversation continue. Again, I thank you. I apologize if I've participated in rhetoric, Mayor, and that's not, never been my goal. My goal has been, I've definitely been frustrated and tired, but my goal has just been to make sure Sioux Falls gets this right. And I mean that truly. Because I've, I've done this in other places and I came home specifically to see us do this and move the ball forward. So, I thank you for helping move that ball forward. But I just am here to ask you again, please consider meeting with those of us who have worked in the regulated market, continuing the dialogue, getting that commission in effect, considering the amendments tonight. Have a, a good dialogue and an open mind and just think about how are we going to get that regulated market to work? I think it's access, so more locations than we see up there. I think it's safety and I think Department of Health, I trust in them. I've been a part of their processes and they've done a heck of a job getting rules that I'm going to have to follow when I get a license and we're going to make safety a top priority. So, I do think we're moving in the right direction, but I think we need to get it right. And we need to continue that dialogue. So, that's all for now. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Emmett. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Please come on up.
Good evening.
Hi, my name's Erin Drew and I'm a Moody County resident. Fun fact to add to that gentleman's about the history of prohibition of cannabis is that William H. Hearst, back in the early nineteen hundreds, had a huge amount of funds invested into making paper from wood. And like he also said, a lot of paper before that point was made from hemp. And he had a lot of money in people's pockets where he was able to sway politicians to outlaw it. Anyways, going on. And just specific to the zoning, I think that these restrictions make no sense from a public health perspective, an economic perspective, or even a moral perspective to keep perpetuating a negative stigma on patients who responsibly consume a substance that is objectively safer than either alcohol or tobacco. I'm going to probably just go over your head with some of this stuff, but I'm going to name off some studies that were literally published just within the last few months about cannabis research. The, just in the American Journal of Public Health, the enactment of adult-use cannabis regulation is not associated with any significant upticks in marijuana use by adolescents. The prevalence of, or proximity of cannabis dispensaries doesn't influence a young person's intention to use cannabis and overall isn't positively associated with the increase, increase in teenage use. Studies also published, like in the Nicotine and Tobacco Research Journal, both the passages of medical and recreational laws aren't associated with any uptick in youth tobacco use. In fact, medical cannabis helped me quit smoking. And the establishment of cannabis retailers are not associated with any upticks in criminal activity. And by contrast, a study published also found that dispensary closures were, were associated with increases of crime. Even a top federal official, just last week, the Director of the US National Institute on Drug Abuse acknowledged that adult-use cannabis legalization hasn't led to jumps in any, in adolescents' use. And so, I could keep going. Study after study have found that medical cannabis access laws are associated with decline in alcohol consumption, increase in tax revenue, yada, yada, not associated with adverse effects on traffic safety, not associated with increase in drug treatment admissions, violent crime or overdose deaths. And I could keep going and going, but it seems like a lot of public words, like I do get there have been some amendments, but it seems like a lot of the public but it seems like a lot of the public words the last several meetings, specifically relating to cannabis, are falling on deaf ears. And while I have you here, what I don't get is why you think people really have their chance to say anything at the very beginning and stages of this, where input would have mattered most. Yeah, citizens have a responsibility to make themselves aware in meetings and hearings, but the government also has a responsibility to ask for it. And the general public didn't know what to expect or even know what... Because medical cannabis here is completely new thing. People don't know what to expect. And I know people that diligently follow the city news and social media. And they thought the ordinances zoning were already sorted out before July, or they hadn't heard when the task force meeting was supposed to be after it already had happened. I know people had to scour the internet to find details about that meeting that happened at eight thirty a.m. on a weekday. But probably like a lot of people, I would have loved to come to those meetings, but I couldn't because I have work. Obviously, at least it seems to me, you're still trying to hide what went on in those task force meetings, since your websites, meeting archives, indicate that those two meetings are the very few where no meeting minutes or media is available for viewing. And unless Sioux Falls is exempt from South Dakota Municipal League or South Dakota Open Meeting Laws, as far as I know, meeting minutes are supposed to be posted not too long after a meeting. So... But I do appreciate, again, the new amendments you're considering, and you're moving in the right direction. And I guess I'm just looking forward to seeing where this goes.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Seth Pyraman, and I'm the holder of the sign. Just kidding. That was supposed to be a little light humor, but guess not. I live in Sioux Falls. I'm the Attorney General over the Flandrew-Santee Sioux Tribe, and they own property in Sioux Falls. And I brought up a few things that I'd like to reiterate. I sent this around earlier. I'm not sure if it's been distributed to you. But these are the same comments that we had based on some of the former zoning ordinances, which I'm not quite sure were considered because I didn't see significant changes. Big issues that we don't see, dispensary as being a sensitive use compared to some of the other items on the list. We believe that the thousand-foot restriction that is in 3420G-55 is sufficient for establishing the distance between these organizations. And one, we think that the... Third, we think that the restriction on labs is completely unnecessary. I think you'd be really surprised to even figure out that a lab was in your neighborhood unless there was a sign. When I look at this map, you know, obviously, the tribe's run a successful medical marijuana program for over two months now and has a lot of customers on this map. We think about our customers and our patients that we would like to be able to access marijuana on an easier basis than having to drive to Flandrew. And we don't think that the current ordinance as proposed does that. If you ever... You probably don't do this, but if you wear Native Nation shirts around town, people walk up to you, they'll shake your hand, they'll thank you for the work that you've done, and they will give you verbatim stories about how impactful marijuana has been on their lives. They've often said, "We are not leaving the state now because we have access to marijuana." Perhaps my... I've heard a husband who had Crohn's disease, we've heard chronic pain, all of these stories that we feel really strongly about that we're benefiting. We have well over six thousand patients in our system now, and I think over forty percent of them are from Sioux Falls. So I'm confident that there are people living in every little square block on this map, and they need access to cannabis in a reasonable and timely manner. So thank you again for your time. Do you want copies of these, or do you have...
We got an email to us, Seth.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Seth.
If anybody wants a paper copy, here it is. And I have some other comments, but I'll save those for the other ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks, Seth. Anyone else here to speak on this? Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pamela Cole, resident of Sioux Falls. Lived in Brookings many, many years, and as I'm listening tonight, it makes me think about the Prairie Doc, Dr. Rick Holm, that many of you may know personally. Certainly, he was a mentor to me. He passed away in March of 2020. And I think that his words speak, to break down the stigma of this. And I want to read that. But first of all, I really wanted to express and reiterate that I think you're here for one reason with this ordinance, is to enact the will of the people, provide them with the ability to have access to their medication that they need. But I do want to read this to you because I think it would help you, and it would help the audience as well. So John Kubel, a reporter from the Brookings Register. He interviewed him before he passed away. So as the interview with the Register neared its end, Holm surfaced a social issue that will be gone in ten, twenty years. Right now, the country is going through a hard time about cannabinoids. Cannabis, marijuana, CBD, hemp. So here's what I would say about that whole line of topic. There is some wonderful relief out there. You don't have to search very hard for it to work, but there is some really good relief. But boy, when someone is in pain, this stuff really makes a difference. It's given me hope, too. It brings a person out of the shadows. Following his surgery, a five-to-six-hour procedure used to remove pancreatic cancer, there were times Holm suffered from severe belly pain, but relief was on its way. Friends from afar came home and provided me with some of Mother Nature's green weed, he explained. My belly pain went away. And not only that, I started having fun again, watching movies. I was enjoying myself. And the danger is much smaller. Seventy thousand people die of opioids every year. There's a rescue right here with cannabinoids. Help society turn that around and save lives. Live a good life. Pay it forward. In conclusion, I also worked a couple of years in hospice. And I really think that there's a really strong need for something like this. And I don't think you want people in the shadows. I think that you want them to have access to this. And I also think there is an economic opportunity that you may be missing out on. And I really do like the idea of calming, you know, your jets, maybe making your ordinances work, and then see how they go. I like what Counselor Brecki has proposed. I like the idea of a commission. But think about this and de-stigmatize this and look at it as an opportunity to help other people. So Dr. Rick Holm, thank you. He helps so many people. A great mentor.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item? Come on up. Come on up, man.
Good evening. Good evening. Jonathan, Sioux Falls. I have a couple of different topics I'd like to talk to. Will of the people was one of them. Just simple math, about two hundred thousand residents in Sioux Falls, seventy-five percent of the population, one hundred fifty thousand people have voted for this in your city and your districts. Twenty-six locations will not be enough to suffice those people. You will cause massive inconvenience to people that are looking for this for medication. A few little topics: patience, booze, trust of the government, addictiveness, first-time use, and do research. So these are all the things I've been hearing people say. And I appreciate where people are coming from, but like when I hear, "I don't trust the government," or "we don't trust the government," there's good reasons for that. I would say you could look at the patent that the U.S. government holds for cannabis today. They filed for it in 1998. And I'll give you the number right here. It's Patent Number 6630507. That is a patent applied by the U.S. government for medical uses, for the application of cannabis for medical benefit. It's a Schedule I narcotic as well currently in our government, which means it has no medical benefits. How does the U.S. government have a patent, I just gave you the number, filed in 1998, for medical benefits in cannabis? So the lies are true. They've been lying to you. It is a racist agenda that they put against marijuana, even down to the name marijuana. It's a sativa L plant. It's not even marijuana. Marijuana was given to it as a derogatory term to continue the racist attack against it. It was... Hold on. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. I'll just leave that there. That one's easy. For addiction and people's need for this, I was run over by a car in 2014. I lived in a hospital for thirteen, or three months. I died. They brought me back. I had a triple compound fracture of tib fib. My back was broken into two places. My scapula was shattered. My ear was removed, my head. My thumb was shattered. I lost six pints of blood, and they gave me all the fentanyl and Dilaudid I could stand. So a seventy-two-hour fentanyl patch would last me about eighteen hours. And then I could eat ten-milligram Dilaudid five to eight a day, which, I mean, the amount of drugs I was taking by myself is enough to kill this room. So I was on that by myself. After about eleven months of that medication, I decided that I didn't need it anymore, and I couldn't stop. I left all my medication at my mother's house. I went to Tampa. I stayed in my friend's second bedroom with his double bed. As a grown man, that's a small bed. And I lived in that room for four weeks to recover from the addiction. And I don't know if anybody's been addicted to narcotics and lived on them that heavy. I'd rather get run over by a car a hundred more times than go through the withdrawals. Withdrawals are some serious issues. And the one thing I used to keep me from jumping through the window was I smoked weed. Weed was the only thing that kept the elephant off my chest. Again, I don't know if you guys know what real addiction it really feels like. I can't describe it. It's intolerable. So for addictive and what it does for people, that's my own personal story. When we go to the patent again, about how many people, how the government has the U.S. patent for medical use, you know, they don't outlaw booze, but six percent of the world's population dies every single year from alcohol. There's 3.3 million people every single year die from alcohol. There's never been a case of anyone dying from weed, ever, 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 ever. The only way you could die from smoking weed would be if you smoked enough weed to die from smoke inhalation. You would suffocate from no oxygen. It has nothing to do with the marijuana. You cannot overdose on it. And in that patent, you'll read that the government says that you can consume up to seven hundred and fifty grams at a time of cannabis without any ill effect. I mean, that's three-quarters of a liter of oil. You know, to make a liter of oil might take thirty pounds of marijuana extracted down and to make a liter. So, you know, you could literally eat twenty pounds of marijuana, and it still wouldn't kill you. So the fear behind it is unfounded. It has all been fed to us by the government, and I know that sounds conspiracy, but you can look it all up. It was definitely a racist campaign against it. Oh, teen use. I loved what that lady was talking about. In every single state that marijuana has come into effect, teen use is down in every single state. You don't have to trust me. You guys can look all this up. We have more information than we could ever ask for on these phones. You don't have to listen to people like me coming in here to educate you. My information is this much. You guys could take an hour and learn everything I know on the web to get the answers you need. So we would appreciate if you would take the time to do that and not implement things that are going to be counter to what we're doing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else to speak to this? Come on up.
Good evening.
Hi there. Greg Jamison, Sioux Falls. I just wanted to bring up a topic I brought up to the Joint Planning Commission with the Minnehaw County and the City Planning Commission a while back. And I've talked to a couple of you about it. The issue was unfolding with the use, but sensitive use issue, when I found on the map churches who had moved into commercial-zoned areas. And when they did that, then in this map, they were given this thousand-foot halo circle around them as they would in any normal sensitive-use situation. But I think what's happened when they moved into these commercial areas, there's an unintended consequence. Some of the land and area that they're in is the most expensive property within the city. The highest rents, the most expensive development. And there's a concern. Certainly, those churches, moving to those areas, are probably doing great work and for good reason, one reason or another. But I think unintended consequence is that they've eliminated a large area in your map. And I think as you go forward with other issues, perhaps in zoning, where somebody else is looking for a conditional use or another use on a piece of property, only to find that there's been a church, a satellite church, or some portion of a church moved into a commercial-zoned area, that now that land use is prohibited. And so I'm only bringing it up as a potential revision that could be done to correct this issue, to expand the map here, but really for other uses. As a commercial real estate agent with clients who own land in some of the most expensive areas, it's a restricted use, put on them unintentionally, I'm sure. No church, I'm sure, moved into these commercial zones to say, "Oh, well, let's see if we can knock out some of these uses." I just ask that you consider looking at that. If not tonight, maybe in the future, at the use of those churches, given that sensitive use designation in those highly commercial areas. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Anyone else here to speak on Item 41? Come on up. Good evening.
Hi. Lisa Nolan. I'm a citizen here in Sioux Falls, and I'm a big free market, I'm big on free-market principles. So I just wanted to come speak today to talk about free-market principles and let you know how much I appreciate the way that you guys work for those, the way that you've led with a spirit of entrepreneurship and a focus on innovation. We think that's really important for businesses. It allows businesses to flourish and for people to thrive. And regardless of the type of industry, this consistency with free-market principle, that we would let people, that we would remove the barriers because we know they're capable of incredible things. My kids came with me today, and I've already spoken on this in the first hearing, but they wanted to come with to see what a city council hearing was like. And they've been sitting there for the last twenty minutes begging me to go up and speak. So I appreciate them being able to see this process. It's been great. I was joking when we came in, that Jack's shirt was completely coincidental, just wearing tie dye. I love it. But I just wanted to make sure that this focus is on free-market principles. We've seen that breweries and microbreweries thrive when the regulations are removed. And actually, cities do really well when they have a lot of microbreweries. So we appreciate the free-market principles you guys have pushed forward. And I just ask that you continue to consider those as you look at the amendments and that you just help remove those barriers because people are capable of incredible things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on Item 41? Come on up.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Deborah Owen, Public Policy Director of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. The chamber rises in support of the city's cautious approach to medical cannabis zoning laws. The city, through the work of the task force and input from residents, has sought to honor the will of the voters' approval of IM-26 while balancing those concerns, those property rights, of potential neighboring property owners, all while ensuring the sale of medical cannabis does not negatively affect the fabric of our community. Although chambers of commerce do not normally support limiting the marketplace, we recognize that the city's strategy is to begin cautiously at first, is reasonable, knowing that the city may lessen the restrictions as the community better understands the implementation and use of medical cannabis and the impact, if any, on our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Anyone else here to speak on Item 41? All right. Not seeing anyone else. So what we will do is we will move into any questions for staff first, then we'll get a motion, and then we can move into discussion amongst the council. So is there any specific questions for Jason on the city side on the zoning piece? All right, let's get a motion on the floor then.
Move to approve.
Second. Knightzert. All right. Motion, Kylie, seconded by Knightzert to approve this item. Now we'll move into some discussion. Who wants to kick us off? Anyone? Counselor Kyle, you're on.
Thank you. Number one, I was one that supported the 500 to 999-feet CUP in hopes that it would open up more while it's... And I think it has been beneficial in that regard, maybe not to the point that some individuals wish it were. However, I do believe that every district in this city is eligible for a dispensary. To address an item that one of our public inputters had addressed, I'd like to address the sensitive use... I'd like to address, uh, the sensitive use question. And that is something that I had identified, uh, early on in this process. And it did center on, uh, churches moving into commercial areas, uh, which then impacts, in this case, the location of dispensaries, but could be, uh, other, uh, establishments such as bars and restaurants serving alcohol. And so I have already discussed with, uh, with the administration, with the city attorney's office, uh, once we have this part of the medical cannabis behind us with the ordinances, that it is my intention to further examine bringing something forward that would, uh, impact the ability of, uh, what's termed a sensitive use, moving into some of the commercial areas willingly, moving into those areas. And maybe considering that if they do so, that they lose that sensitive use status. And it's nothing against, and I don't know that'll be necessarily just limited to churches, but it, uh, could be other sensitive uses too. In this case, it could not apply to schools because we have to adhere to state law. However, I do think it's, it, it is something that should be addressed moving forward. So just wanted to mention that.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Kylie. Other discussion council on this item. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Jensen, go ahead.
I think we need to amend section one by inserting the number one hundred and twenty-one to the existing blank and the placeholder denoted by triple X.
All right. All right, we got a motion by Jensen and a, um, second by Erickson to amend accordingly. I'm just looking at what that is here. You want to speak to what, what we're filling in?
It's in the, in the first section, chapter one twenty-one is where land.
Okay. Okay.
I can speak to that.
This is the amended version. Okay. Go ahead.
It, it just references the licensing ordinance that's now, uh, because this zoning ordinance references one twenty-one, which is the licensing.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on that amendment quick then.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. So we're at the main motion now as amended. Further discussion, your Counselor Brecky?
First of all, I want to thank those that brought forward, you know, the five hundred to ninety-nine, nine ninety-nine conditional use. I really thought that would do that for me. I, for me initially, I really thought this was easy peasy because I thought, yeah, you just use your sense, you know, sensitive uses and it's good to go, until I saw the map. You know, sometimes we, you know, things make sense in writing. It seems like you're being reasonable, but I'm really having a hard time getting past the map. And it's because of the way we've, you know, it's because of sensitive uses instead of just, you know, um, living with state law. And the thousand-foot rule, we've added all of our sensitive uses. And again, while that made sense to me initially, in fact, I think I even leaned over to Councilmember Knightzert and I said, well, that, that's just easy peasy, just do that. And then I just, I can't get past the map and I can't get past the map with the five hundred to nine ninety-nine because it really didn't do anything. And at the end of the day, what I really wanted to see for our dispensaries, whether it be five or whether it morphs into something else at a later date, is I'd like them to be in the retail areas. I just would like them to be in the retail areas, just buried in the retail areas like casinos, like pharmacies, like bars. Um, we, by limiting the number that's coming in, you know, we're going to start with five, it looks like. You know, we're going to try to control how they come in, but, but to put them in these obscure places when it's medical marijuana, I'll just say it again, I can't get past the map. What we've written makes sense. Um, the compromise makes sense, but I can't get past the map. We, we've put them in these obscure locations and there's hardly any. And it's not where I'd like to see us end up. So it's not where I'd like to see us begin. And, um, with all due respect for everybody's compromises on this, it's just really hard for me to support it because of that.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Is there other discussion, counsel? All right, hearing none, then let's take on the main motions amended, or take a vote, excuse me, on that.
Councilmember Starr?
No.
Brecky?
No.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that item passes six to two. We'll move on to our next item, please.
Item forty-two is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter one twenty-one by adding medical cannabis regulations.
Good evening, Erica.
Good evening, Erica Bag, Chief of Staff. Three weeks ago, September seventeenth, we presented a thorough outline of the proposed ordinance during first reading. As a reminder, this ordinance provides for access through licensing regulations to medical cannabis. It is not the intent tonight to recap what was presented on first reading. It is my understanding that there are several amendments being proposed and we look forward to learning about each of them this evening. Ultimately, the administration looks forward to having an established licensing ordinance after tonight's second reading so that we can begin the next steps in the process of implementing this work. I'm going to turn it over now to either Counselor Knightzert or City Attorney Coestra for any comments they may have regarding, uh, the policy involved in this ordinance or the ordinance itself. And then I'm open for any questions that this group may have. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Erica. Stacy, go ahead.
Yep, uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I would just add, this is the same body of ordinances that, uh, was presented on first reading. So, uh, just so the public's aware, uh, typically what happens with amendments is that they can be brought the night of, uh, a second reading. So state law controls in that regard in that, uh, in the event that there's a substantive change or amendment to the ordinance, then it has to go to an additional reading. So what the, what the council did, uh, as, as you can see from, uh, if you go online and check the agendas, that these amendments actually were posted on Friday just to give the, the public an additional amount of notice as to the discussion that will be, uh, brought forward tonight on these amendments. And so, uh, just, again, just so the public's aware, this is, that's not a legal requirement to post them in that regard. And as we discuss amendments, uh, we just have to be mindful of state law in that regard. So.
All right. Well, I know there are quite a few amendments we're going to walk through tonight. So we'll, we'll start with public input, uh, and then we'll start moving through our amendments that are going to be made. So, you know, for public input, come on up. You have five minutes for this item as well. Hey Ned.
Hi. Ned Horstod again with Cannabis Industry Association, South Dakota. Is this thing on?
We can flip it on for you.
That'd be cool.
There you go.
All right. Thank you. Um, I'll get that, get to that in just a, a minute here, but, um, I, I guess I covered two things in the other ordinance and I know that they, they kind of bleed over into this. Um, I'm going to call out three things here and try to not repeat myself, uh, based on what was in the zoning ordinance. There are two big issues and, and a third that may be news to you all since this was posted on Friday, as you probably know, or hopefully know, the Department of Health released their final draft of rules for the Rules Review Committee on Friday. In that, you will notice, if you have not read it already, uh, Department of Health Rule forty-four ninety oh three oh three. These both have to do with transferability. Um, that outlines how location transfer would work according to the Department of Health. Department of Health Rule forty-four ninety oh three oh four covers tr, transfer of ownership. So with, with the, um, Department of Health handling that piece, I don't think it's necessary to prohibit how people can operate their business, uh, or transfer, uh, licenses. So with that out of the way, the, the two, um, really big things, I think here, uh, number one is, we'll start with a fee. Um, grab my notes here for you. The, so, you know, we're talking about a hundred thousand fee, a hundred thousand dollar fee. It sounds like that's coming down, maybe even more so for a testing lab, and I'm happy to hear that. Um, Department of Revenue has been pretty clear that you will be able to collect sales tax on this. So an exorbitant fee to start up a business is, uh, really unnecessary. Furthermore, South Dakota Codeified Law thirty-four twenty G seventy-two says that the state application fee, quote, "may not exceed five thousand dollars." It also says that the total fees collected shall generate revenue sufficient to offset all expenses of implementing and administering the chap, chapter. Thirty-four twenty G sixty states that local governments, quote, "may charge a reasonable fee for the local license permit or registration." With the state cap being at five thousand, a hundred thousand is twenty times that. Uh, I would argue that that is not reasonable. And, uh, you know, in fact, even the South Dakota Municipal League suggested five thousand dollars in their sample licensing ordinance for municipalities. So I would ask that that gets amended, uh, bring the fee down to five thousand to, to bring it, uh, more in line with state law and, uh, enjoy the tax revenue that, uh, the city of Sioux Falls will get based on sales at the dispensary. Now, the biggest piece here is, uh, you're proposing fi, uh, capping licenses at five in a city of two hundred thousand people. Could talk about this for a little while. Uh, I'm going to put this under here because last time we heard, you know, we really don't know how people feel about this. Two we, or a few weeks ago, you had about two hours of public input with only one individual telling you you were going in the right direction here. I'll just point out, like, approximately fifty-four thousand people, sixty-one point four percent of Sioux Falls voted yes on amendment A. That's rec. This deals specifically with medical, sixty-nine thousand plus, uh, seventy-six point four percent, according to my calculation, which is about three times more than, uh, any of the elected officials up here, uh, got in terms of votes. So, um, one other piece, I don't know if we can zoom this in. Probably should have printed this out. So here's another, just another thing, since, uh, you know, the comment was made that we don't know how people feel about this. This is in the Sioux Falls Politics, uh, Facebook group, which I know many of you are a part of. How many medical cannabis businesses should the city of Sioux Falls allow? Top vote by over five hundred and fifty some, uh, was, let me get this right. Government should not decide, let the free market sort it out. Uh, second vote was more than five, but still capped by the city. They got eighteen votes. Um, and then eleven votes for the current proposal. I understand this is not scientific, but I just want to point out that, uh, I, I think it's pretty clear that, you know, how people feel about this. So, um, I can't emphasize enough how bad of an idea a hard cap is. You've got one time to get this right. If you set a hard cap, fairness is out the door from here on out because there'll be five, five individuals, five businesses that will get licensed. So anyone beyond that, there's kind of an unfair thing going on there. And as we discussed with the, the zoning ordinance that just passed, you probably have a cap of maybe thirty tops, uh, where this would even happen, which is probably not even quite in line with, uh, what Rapid City is proposing at fifteen, if you look at it per capita. So get rid of the caps, lower the license fee, first and foremost, get rid of the cap, please. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this one? You can go, you go next, Emmett. Come on up, sir. Yep.
Dennis Hagen, Sioux Falls, Washington. One thing confuses me, and maybe it confused a lot of other people, or maybe they're just smarter than I am. What clearly is the difference between medical marijuana and recreational marijuana? It seems to me that if I've got a pain, then I go to the doctor. And the doctor then hopefully gives me something that works. How is it if it's the medical marijuana side is, you're going to have all these places where people run to because they got pain? Sounds to me like you're getting into a situation that could be very, very difficult to regulate. Many, many people wanting to get involved. And I'm not convinced that there's anything financial that benefits you because I think we've already know there's too many people not working and that affects the economy and that affects the tax revenue. That affects everything down the line. I can understand where you're going from, but I know you're a good governing body. So if things start going haywire, you can always change it. And unlike the other guy, that, that goofy guy that runs you down so bad, I just figure if it starts to go bad, you just change everything. But to me, you know, I, I'm just, I'm just confused. You know? What, I haven't seen a definition of what is going to be medical. You know? What pains is it going to stop? I don't hear any of that specific stuff. So I'm confused. Or is this just having a lot of places where people are really running to get recreational marijuana? And I've hired people before and I know there are negative effects unless they were taking something else. There's been people that I've not let get on machinery before there was ever a regulation just because of their behavior and they just couldn't funk, function and think as fast as they could when they weren't on anything. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. Emmett, come on up. You were next. Come on up. David, you come up next.
Good evening, Emmett Reistrer for nine fifteen South Fourth Avenue. I shouldn't be as long this time. Again, another cannabis ordinance. I think every time a cannabis ordinance is on the agenda, I'm going to make sure to come back and ask you to consider creating a board or a commission. I think this is a major topic in the community, obviously. So again, I have to reiterate that. I don't mean to repeat, but I hope after tonight's meeting, you'll remember Emmett mentioned the commission or board. I think you get folks on that, who are interested in this, who are stakeholders, industry, community, church leaders, whoever makes sense, I think will, uh, serve this council very well through recommendations. And I have experience being on those types of commissions in Colorado. So that was my main point. But on this ordinance, um, the main issues, uh, and I talked about them last time, but what I haven't really heard about and want to, want to bring up again is the wholesale side of the industry, uh, which is my main focus. As a cultivator and manufacturer, I've made every type of product you can see on the shelf, uh, in a dispensary. That is a major side of this industry. So you're going to allow five dispensaries, but zero wholesalers, which means those dispensaries will have to bring in their product, most likely from Rapid City, which is now where my company is probably going to go after tonight. Um, we would love to do business in Sioux Falls. We think the size of our facility could create over fifty jobs. Uh, some of the top management jobs are in the range of six figures. If you just look at job listings in states that have these types of facilities, you can see the qualifications that are required to fill those positions, egg science, uh, botany, um, doing agricultural, uh, activities on a very large scale. These are good paying jobs that we would bring to South Dakota. Those wholesale facilities are not open to the public. The wholesale facilities, I wouldn't be complaining about the map so much. That's not about access to the consumer directly. We need that infrastructure and we've seen buildings in Sioux Falls that would work for this. It's tough to find that, to find that land. And now I'm seeing Mitchell, Watertown, even North Sioux City, Yankton. I can't even remember them all. Rapid City sticks out the most. Um, having a couple of conversations, a couple of public meetings, they've all decided there's no risk in allowing a wholesale facility. These are the most secure, um, these, these facilities, I just, I, I guess what I'm asking for is, I hope in your comment tonight, I'm wondering why. I, I've heard it's just about being cautious, but how do you discern why these facility types are not acceptable at all? I think we really deserve an answer and I'm, I'm hoping, and if you have a good answer, I want to hear it. Um, um, so I'm just wanting to know why. Because it's a big decision for me to take, you know, maybe up to twenty million dollars in investment and fifty jobs and good jobs and a very large facility and develop that out in Pennington County. I don't feel like we've had that opportunity to sit down and really talk about what these facilities look like, how we participate in the community. And that's just the big piece of this that's missing. Obviously, you know, I'm concerned about caps. I've already shared why. I just don't think it leads to a good process. It's bad perception. It's luck, quite frankly, that determines who gets into the business and who doesn't. So in that regard, you're actually giving up control where if you just had licensing processes that vet us for the standards, have zoning, you know, then you could really have, um, a chance to. you know, then you could really have a chance to set the standard for who gets to operate. But right now, it's kind of luck of the draw. Last time I mentioned it's a land game. The property owners in those green zones are slowly figuring out that they've got this, and I've no doubt a lot of them will take advantage of it. But they didn't go into this like me with a mission to build this business. They're inheriting an opportunity, and then they have to kind of reverse engineer, how do we take advantage of this opportunity? That's just the whole approach to me that's kind of odd. So, caps, I think, always are bad, and if you do the research yourself, you'll see in almost every state, it's been continually litigated, challenged, speculated, just a lot of risks that if I were in your shoes, I wouldn't want to take as a city. I would get this commission together so we can get this continually improving as we go forward towards, you know, a fully legal market with recreational within the next year, year to two years. But I do appreciate your time and listening to me. Please consider allowing those other facility types, lifting the caps, and consider all the amendments. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? Come on up.
Greetings. I'm David Sokitis, and I just had to say a few words. I'd like to remind everybody that we are talking about medical cannabis. We're talking about medicine. And the city is already familiar with facilities that prescribe and distribute medicine. They're called pharmacies. So, you know, because we're talking about apples and apples here, the requirements for medical cannabis dispensaries should be similar or less than those of pharmacies. And that's because medical cannabis is safer than a lot of the drugs inside a pharmacy. I mean, it seems like a pretty simple statement. If you have medical cannabis, it should be easier to get a hold of than, say, opiates that you have at a pharmacy. They are more addictive and more dangerous. Cannabis is much safer, so it should be less trouble to buy and to sell than to distribute. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak?
Jonathan Hunt, Sioux Falls. So, I've been in the industry for 13 years. I started out in Colorado. I've worked in five startup states. I've watched this happen in five individual states in different setups. You guys are setting yourself up for future headaches. What do I mean by that? Well, putting out five licenses is an absolute monopoly, and not being from the industry and not understanding how it functions. Those people become the controllers of everything behind it, because they can say yes or no to your product. As a wholesale manufacturer, it is, it then becomes like a lobbying, an arrangement, a relationship that we have to foster instead of just being able to operate as a business. When you have five people that literally will control the entire market, you know, we're talking about billions of dollars going through very few hands. So, I would, I would, I would say, I keep hearing the same thing, commission. This doesn't sound like a bad idea. You guys don't even realize who's in the room here with you. I mean, maybe you do. You know, you have, you have people standing over here in the corner, Melissa, myself. Sorry, your name again? Emmett, I'm sorry. These people have been doing this for a very long time. They have massive amounts of information and experience going into this industry to help you guys from missing the tripwire, so you don't blow yourselves up. You're definitely gonna have problems with the five licenses, period, end of story. I've watched it happen in several states. And the comment about, you know, I haven't heard how he's confused and, you know, don't know how this helps, and is anybody talking about pain? I'm in pain every single day, all day long. It helps me tremendously. So, if somebody needed confirmation, if it helps, there's a confirmation. So, I would also invite you guys to speak with people that are actually in policing. If you speak to our chief police in our city, he will tell you, since we've opened up, the entire city has gone quiet. He is not as busy as he has been. He has less calls, less domestic violence, less dealing with meth. It is, he came to me with this realization of what I was telling him as we were getting started was going to happen. I'm not telling you guys, I'm not giving you guys a look into my opinion of what's coming. I'm telling you the future. Like I said, I've done this in five states. Emmett's done it in five states, or 12 states. We've seen this over and over and over again, and the reason why we're coming to you with these, with these solutions to the problems that we see that you guys don't see yet is because we know what's coming. We're not guessing. It's history. You can look at the 20-plus states that have gone through this. You can look at the nine-plus states that have gone recreational. There's no guesswork in this. It's all been laid out. It's all been worked. There's been hundreds of people like you sitting behind beautiful wood structures like this, having discussions with people like me all over this country. There's been hundreds of millions of dollars spent with attorneys trying to figure this stuff out all over the country. Eight states went legal this year. This is not a complicated subject. There's lots and lots of information out there for you guys to achieve or to receive, to make the right decision to stop what's coming. We already know what's coming. We're imploring you guys to stop what's coming. You know, a little bit of good decision-making right now will go a long way for all the troubles that you're gonna have to deal with on the backside of the wrong decision now. So, I'd implore you to just listen to some of the people that have been doing this for a long time, that have already seen what's coming. Again, I'm telling you history, and you could read this. It's not my opinion. You can read everything I'm telling you. It's in every state that's gone legal. Just spend the time to do it. Don't rely on yourselves for the information, because you have no experience in it. You don't understand what's gonna happen. You don't know what's coming. We absolutely do. We're not guessing. Thank you very much.
Anyone else here to speak tonight? Come on up.
Brandon John, Sioux Falls. I just want to talk about a couple of the issues that I have with it. You stated at the last meeting that a license is going to be non-transferable, because you don't want the license being transferred to someone that shouldn't have it or will abuse it. However, isn't that where the suspension and revocation rules would come into play? Shouldn't those rules cover any issue that would present itself with a possible bad owner or license? How can you expect someone to spend a bunch of money and build a business only for it to be worthless when the owner wants to retire or move on from the business? Also, you only expect up to 6,000 patients in Sioux Falls with the very restrictive rules that you're implementing? How do you expect five businesses that you're allowing to split 6,000 customers between them and still pay $100,000 for a license every two years, plus state fees, plus taxes, and business expenses, and still be able to provide a quality medicine at a fair price for the city's sickest and poorest people? You're basically making the city's sickest and poorest people foot the bill for fees that should be geared more towards recreational, not medical. The limitations on who can even get a medical card dictate that people paying for this will be the sickest people in town. Are you comfortable knowing that you're doing this to these people? People like my grandparents and my sister, who have all had cancer in the last five years, that benefited from marijuana? Are these the people you really want paying for this horrible plan? I would ask you as members to not pass such garbage just to pass it. It's not a good strategy to pass something this bad just to go and fix it later, at the expense of patients and voters. I would ask that you delay this vote and put together a plan that makes sense for Sioux Falls. A delay is better than passing something this horrible. You need to leave all the extra fees that were added for this for an eventual rec bill that is going to pass at some point. Just basically, the math in your plan is not sustainable for owners or patients. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak tonight on this one? Come on up. If you guys are ready in the back, get ready. When she's done, you can come on up then.
Hi, Erin Drew from Moody County. I'm also a small business owner doing freelance marketing and graphic design, and it's pretty much one of my dreams to be able to work either directly in the cannabis industry or as an ancillary business. And there are several problems with this, but I'll just identify a handful. A bigger concern for me is that these license caps will lead to a lower product, quality products at higher prices and limit product accessibility for the patients like myself. Part of these ordinances should be, to be inclusive of the population that these dispensaries will serve. The allowed areas for dispensaries will not be most accessible to the population that needs it to be, like physically, the physically handicapped. Imagine someone in a similar situation like me, who has immobilizing splints on their wrists and has chronic widespread pain, and they're unable to drive themselves because they are in debilitating pain, or they have to either opt for public transportation. And it may not look like that it takes much to function and to risk points, but you literally have zero idea. Been living in them for eight months. You have zero idea. And it breaks my heart knowing that there's people that have it way worse than me that would have to go through those avenues to be able to access something that would make them feel better. And the next, the next biggest thing was that, since I am a small business owner wanting to get into this, is that it pretty much impedes growth and makes it extremely difficult for investors and businesses to operate and integrate successfully. I know that it's disadvantageous for the plant-touching industries, but also the ancillary businesses that support the actual growth in processing and sales of the products. And, you know, that can be like packaging companies, machine providers, ag companies, digital marketers, attorneys, and they're the all same kinds of companies that are needed to support any other business in an industry. And I'm also concerned that this cap will push away the mom-and-pop businesses in local communities to out-of-state or even out-of-country corporate giants. It's clearly being displayed in the number of recent mergers and acquisitions in the cannabis market in Canada, and it's starting to be seen here in the United States with multi-state operations. And like the gentleman before me said, that it's beginning the monopolization of this industry. If you aren't aware, the, pretty much the alcohol, tobacco, and pharmaceutical industries are just lurking in the corners on their toes, ready for it to be federally legalized. In fact, they're already starting to invest in the cannabis industry by acquiring firms on the intent of selling their own products. Even Coca-Cola is looking at ways to getting into the cannabis industry. And with that, the biggest thing that I have is that your responsibility as a government for overcoming the stigma of this is extremely important, particularly when it comes to large-scale marketing campaigns facilitated by the government, plus handling employer drug testing, discussions with families, and it's something that should be talked about and not kept hidden. Otherwise, you are keeping that illegal vibe about it still alive, reinforcing outdated historical perspectives. Sure, there might be some allure to the stoner culture for some people, but it's not what most medical cannabis patients want to be identified with. And I'm sick of this, these stigmatized trappings being applied. And don't keep perpetuating that by hiding away dispensaries, and even patients, from out of view. Whether you believe it or not, cannabis patients come from all ranges of backgrounds, and...
Thank you for your input tonight. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on it? Come on up.
Good evening again. Seth Pierman. I live in Sioux Falls, Attorney General for the Flanrewsanti Sioux Tribe. I'd like to start by saying we appreciate the amendments that are coming. It shows that the city council is listening to the public, which is very important, although we, I have a few more suggestions that I'd like to consider. This is not a discussion of whether or not you support marijuana, whether or not your religious beliefs support them, whether or not you're going to consume it yourself. If you don't want marijuana, don't use it. The state of South Dakota, however, in a landslide amendment and initiated measure, said they want cannabis. And this ordinance restricts that cannabis. The licensing fee in this instance is very expensive and would be restrictive on market entrance. We feel like this is an anti-business measure and is not gonna support the economy of Sioux Falls. No cultivation. I've heard a few times that this is a very conservative ordinance. No cultivation is not conservative. That's a principle that you're allowing some other jurisdiction to determine what products are gonna be sold in your jurisdiction. That's not conservatism. You should take the opportunity to sit down and properly craft an ordinance that would regulate the cultivation in your own town so that you could benefit financially and other reasons, and other methods, like we're seeing all over the country. In Flanrews, we have well over 60 employees at our facility, and it's relatively small. We'd likely have at least 30 more if we were able to get a dispensary license in Sioux Falls. But with the five-limit cap, this ordinance isn't necessarily promoting a cannabis industry in Sioux Falls. It's a pro-Brandon, pro-Hartford, pro-T, pro-Harrisburg ordinance that will foster all of the economies surrounding you. Again, not a conservative principle. Has anybody been to Timberlake, South Dakota? Timberlake, South Dakota is in the northern part of the Shiner River Sioux Tribe Reservation, which I remember they have roughly 500 people. They have two dispensary licenses there. So, that's a license for every 250 people. That is access to cannabis, and it also was done in an effort to promote fairness in pricing and competition, which, again, five licenses will not provide. Also, the upfront costs of this, I'd like to jump back to that a little bit, are incredibly restrictive, but they're not going to be as costly as the cost of litigation that arises from the lottery that's coming out of this. I can guarantee that in, you look across the country and other jurisdictions that have a lottery system, litigation always arises. And again, if we have an opportunity to lose $100,000 for a license that we are gambling with, it will force businesses, much like Mr. Reistoffer said, to leave the city of Sioux Falls and go other places. So, again, we think that this needs a lot of work. We don't think the restriction on five licenses is appropriate. Drop the minimums, or drop the licensing fees, and I think you'd have a good ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Anyone else here to speak on this one tonight? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Tyler Childress. I'm from Sioux Falls. I'm a liquor license holder, and I just want to kind of go the opposite direction of the lowering. I think there's a potential chance to stay the same, have the same process, in the same way we do operate business. Businesses will find a way to make money if we charge a liquor license fee of 200,000, 300,000, more. I just want to kind of issue the opposite direction. You know, this doesn't personally affect me, but it will affect my kids. It will affect people around me and people that I know and trust. There's a, there's a, there's a cost to issue this, a cost to maintain this, and a cost to continuously govern this. So, I just want to make sure we understand that a one-time license fee, there will be costs incurred for 100 years from now. The ordinances we create today will come into effect over and over and over again, staffing, future issues that we arise. So, I'm in favor of a high fee and a high entry to get into the business. I think it's important that we understand the full cost of how this operates. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, councilors, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Nice, sir.
Got a motion by Kylie, second by Nigel, to approve.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend, and I move to amend Section 4, Paragraph B.2 by striking the words $100,000 and inserting $50,000 for medical cannabis dispensaries and $5,000 for testing facilities. And, Paragraph B.3, by striking the words "two years" and inserting "one year." And, by striking $100,000 and inserting $25,000 for medical cannabis dispensaries and $1,500 for testing facilities. And, by striking the sentence, "The renewal license fee is, in addition to the application fee required pursuant to Section 121.003B1," and by inserting the word "renewal" between the words "the" and "license" in the last sentence.
Second, Erickson.
All right, we got a motion and an amendment on the floor. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Erickson. We have all that.
We have all that in the record. Clerk, all right. Counselor Kylie, want to unpack that?
Thank you very much. We're not here to debate the merits of medical one or whether it's effective or not effective. That was decided by the voters of the state of South Dakota. We are here to implement the process, and that's what we're doing here. I'm trying to focus on medicinal use versus recreational. We've listened to the comments of the individuals that have presented over the last few weeks. I have personally called and talked with each member of this city council, including the mayor. I've also talked with the city attorney to make sure that the proposal was not running afoul of any state regulations or city ordinances. I have emailed each and every one of you. While we may not, this has not necessarily reached where everybody wants to be, it is a compromise. It strikes a balance. It's an attempt at identifying the middle ground. Basically, again, in a nutshell, for dispensaries, the initial licensing fee would be $50,000 with a $25,000 renewal versus the 50-50 every year. The testing facilities would be $5,000 licensing upfront with a renewal of $1,500 a year. We're changing from a two-year system to a one-year system just to clarify, because there was a lot of confusion out there about the $100,000, is that one year, two years? Reality was $50,000 a year. And this also then removes the language that no renewal of application fees. As proposed in first reading, there was a renewal of the application fees, and this will do away with that. And Counselor Erickson will be explaining why in the next amendment. So I would appreciate, while I can't guarantee where this council will land, I would urge your support.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, discussion on the council on this amendment. Counselor Erickson, go ahead.
I just want to read just a snidbit from a letter that we all got from our two sheriffs in both counties. And the first sentence, I thought, was very eye-opening to me. Not eye-opening, because I get it, but it's just, we know the voters voted for it, but there was so much local control and so much flexibility within this. Many of what is in front of us, I don't like. Some of it I do like, but I know that we have to have some sort of framework in place, and that's compromise when we're all a little bit uncomfortable with the end result. So the sentence that I want to read from this letter was, "The voters of South Dakota, including our two counties, sent a clear message that they want legal and regulated access to medical cannabis." That is absolutely key. They want it legal. They want it regulated. Had they not want it regulated, all of those laws would have been written into place. But you gave each and every local body the right to regulate how we see fit, and we don't all agree up here. We're all challenged in every single way, some too far, some not far enough. And it's a weird place to be in. I talked to some of my friends up in Watertown today. They voted. They passed three. They have all four uses. Their licensing fees are not out of line with what you're seeing proposed to us. Rapid City is a little different. I'm drawing a blank on which city it was, but there's another city that is, for the size of that city, is $20,000 for a couple thousand people that live in that city. And so for me, this is in line with the sake of a compromise of legal and regulated access to medical cannabis. It allowed us to make that decision. Again, I'm uncomfortable, you're uncomfortable. That's the process.
Thanks, Counselor. Other council discussion on this amendment here. All right, I'm not seeing any or hearing any, so let's take a vote on this amendment, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that amendment's going to pass eight to zero. Are there any other amendments to introduce?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Erickson.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Section 4, Paragraph B.1 by inserting the word "initial" between "and" and "application" in the first sentence. And by striking the word "non-refundable" between "A" and "fee," also in the first sentence. And by striking the remainder of the first sentence after the phrase "in and amount" and inserting of $25,000 for medical cannabis dispensaries and $1,500 for testing facilities.
Second.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Counselor Erickson, you want to unpack that one?
Yes, I will. Thank you. So the application fee, one of the, I know it's the way that has been proposed is by doing a lottery system. And so to get your name in that lottery system, or as I've called it, a bingo ball, to get your number in that system in which a third party will be administering this whole process, that application process is now a $25,000 application fee to be in this. It is now refundable. Previously, it was not refundable. And so only those five numbers that are selected, the five individuals that are selected, will have to take that $25,000, will be cashed. I feel that there will be an influx of applications and many unsuccessful applicants, and those applicants will be refunded 100%. I am hopeful that the five successful will cover the application process for all, and that's the justification behind this fee. As I just stated a little bit ago, talking about our friends up north, which there are lots more that are less than us, there's some in the middle, and there's some around there. Watertown has also passed this evening a $25,000 application as well. And with talking through this process using, I think Ida Bailey is who we discussed, I have no idea if that's what we'll land on or what, that's an administration task, that will then cover that cost. You will also, I don't want to speak to the specific amendment, but should an amendment pass later, it changes this license into an asset. It's very different. It is an asset, can be resold, essentially transferred to a different person. When we talk about that, you will see that now becomes an asset. That's a really big deal. That's something that we talked about avoiding at one time, such as a restaurant license does not hold its value, and I don't want to compare apples and oranges, but that doesn't hold its value. This will hold value, and it's different, challenges me greatly. Again, in the spirit of compromise, that's where this justification came to.
All right, thanks, Counselor. Discussion on the council on this amendment here. All right, not seeing or hearing any, so we'll take a vote on this amendment, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that amendment's going to pass eight to zero. Are there other amendments to introduce? Counselor Brecky, go ahead.
Before I begin the discussion, I have just a question I want to ask the city attorney. Now, I asked the city attorney three legal questions, and I asked that the answers be given in writing, and I asked that they not be marked confidential or attorney-client privileged. And that request was denied, and I just want to, you know, confirm with the city attorney that that is still his opinion, that I'm not allowed to share that advice publicly.
Yes.
Thank you. I just want, again, to begin the discussion with that, because the questions that I asked, and they're not confidential, because I asked them, were whether or not a lottery to draw for licenses was an unlawful delegation of legislative authority. The second question was whether it was legal to actually ban cultivation or manufacturing. And the third one was what constitutes a de facto ban. Those are the questions I was asked. I specifically asked that they not be marked confidential, because I wanted to use them in making this very public decision, and I wanted to be able to share that advice with the public, which I believe I have a right to do, but I am in conflict with the city attorney on that. It is with that framework, however, that I am reviewing this decision. And particularly of concern to me is what constitutes a de facto ban. And I think many of the amendments that we're having tonight, that we're doing tonight, reducing the fee, we're looking at transfer, we're looking at a different revocation process, that all helps me deal with the issue, you know, of that ban. And I really want to read the standard that is actually in the state law, which, again, is governing my decision tonight. It says, "Local government prohibition of dispensaries not permitted. No local government may prohibit a dispensary either expressly or through the enactment of an ordinance that makes the operation of the dispensary impracticable in the jurisdiction." Well, what does impracticable mean? Well, it's kind of a reasonable businessman standard. The purpose for my two amendments, the one I'm about to make now, is changing the transfer, is allowing transferability, is to push this impracticability away a little bit so that we're not in that area of making it almost impossible to have a business. When I saw that the business was non-transferable, my biggest concern was that we are not allowing a business owner to develop equity in his business, because his major asset would be the license. And if you can't transfer it to an owner, a different operator, or a different location, you literally cannot generate equity in a business. And that, to me, makes it very difficult for a reasonable businessman to want to do that business. So I've talked to some of my fellow council members. I'm proposing this amendment that would allow it to be transferred under the same circumstances. The new transferee would have to meet all of the same criteria that the original transferee did, and that would be validated by the administration and then reported to the council that a transfer had taken place and that the new transferee would meet all those same criteria. So my motion is as follows. Motion to amend Section 4, Paragraph A.1 by striking "entity" and inserting "licency" and by striking all words in the last sentence after "city," "and" and inserting "is transferable only under the following criteria," and inserting a new sub-paragraph A. to read, "The transferee shall, with the exception of the application and license fees set forth in this chapter, comply with the application, license, and zoning requirements that have been previously met by the current license holder as set forth in these conditions," and a new paragraph sub-B. to read. "The licensed specialists shall review the transferee's application, verify that the provisions of these ordinances have been met, and in the event that the transfer is approved, report such transfer to the city council, and to strike the word 'decision' and insert 'application' in the first sentence of Paragraph A.2C."
All right, motion by Brecky, seconded by Kylie on that. Counselor Brecky unpacked her rationale there ahead of time, so we'll move to any discussion on this one. Counselor Nightzert, go ahead.
So I guess I'll say, there's a good chance I will support this. That being said, I'm not on the premise that there's any problem with any de facto bans or that I have any concern about that. It's more of just thinking of some of the real-world consequences in terms of if it's not transferable, there's some business issues. And I think this language does add some protection where we can make sure that the person it's being transferred to is reputable. And as Ned had pointed out, in the newest regulations that are going to go to the interim rules committee, the state actually sets forth a process by which they're going to have the same thing if more than 50% is transferred. The new owner would have to go through the entire application process, and if it's less than 50%, there's still some things that they have to meet, and it can only be done under the, if they're in good standing, they haven't had violations, and they meet certain other criteria, and it still seems to give the city the power to decide whether they're going to allow a transfer or not. So just based on some common sense rationale is why I'll probably support this. Thanks.
All right, other discussion on this amendment? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Okay, that one's going to pass eight to zero. Counselor Brecky, you got another one?
Mr. Mayor, if I can just...
Counselor Erickson, go ahead.
Our notes were different than what was written in the other area, so I just need to have a cleanup. I'll explain it in its entirety. I'm going to make a motion to amend Section 4, Paragraph B.1, and I will strike, after testing facilities, I will strike "Established by resolution of the city council to defray the costs incurred by the city for background investigations, review of the application, inspection of the proposed premise, and other costs and labor associated with this preceding application." And then insert, "In the event the applicant is denied a registration certificate from the department or the city, the application fee shall be refunded." Second, Brecky.
Got it.
And I can explain that...
Go ahead.
If you'd like. Essentially, when we originally talked about doing the application fee, it was going to be done in resolution. And so this is referring to the resolution, which would have been later on the agenda. We decided to just put it in ordinance versus a resolution. For me personally, I like it in the law, embedded in there, so we know where it's all at. And so that was where I chose to put the amendment. And so my apologies for not catching this earlier. And then the add-in is just, "In the applicant, if they're denied, the application fee shall be refunded." So very self-explanatory, just wanted to make sure that I had it done correctly so we don't have to come back in two weeks and do it again.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counselor...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Yes, and just to clarify, we're just amending the previous amendment made by Counselor Erickson.
It just adds that in. Thank you.
Any discussion on that one, counsel? You guys all right? Were we good on this?
Can I just ask a question?
Go ahead.
On your first ordinance, Councilmember Brecky, when you said...
Can we just finish this one?
Sure.
Okay. So let's vote on this one, then we'll come back to that one? Okay. All right, is there any discussion, any other discussion on that amendment? All right, let's vote on that one.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Brecky, yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. So now we are at, I think, your next amendment. Counselor Brecky, you want to introduce?
Thank you. I'm almost afraid now, but I do thank everyone for their patience. This is some detailed stuff, and it's far better to do it as soon as you catch it than to try to do it later so that you don't have to. The next motion that I'm making is the revocation process. And how I explained this when I discussed it with my fellow council members was, the question is this, the proposed ordinance sets forth an administrative process that's wholly internal in order, when a revocation is to occur. So it's all done internally, you know, through the administration, the entire process. And what I suggested is, that I wanted to bring forth publicly, was, is this important enough that instead of just being an administrative review and revocation process, that it should come to the council for a final hearing and revocation? It's taking somebody's livelihood away. It's a highly regulated area, and this is one of those places where I would say it is very similar to alcohol. And we do, alcohol license revocations are brought up to the council for a hearing and final determination. So I am proposing that, yes, it is one of those things that is serious enough, and there are so many detailed possibilities of violations with the 18 different...
And what I suggested is, that I wanted to bring forth publicly, was, is this important enough that instead of just being an administrative review and revocation process, that it should come to the council for a final hearing and revocation? It's taking somebody's livelihood away. It's a highly regulated area, and this is one of those places where I would say it is very similar to alcohol. And we do, alcohol license revocations are brought up to the council for a hearing and final determination. So I am proposing that, yes, it is one of those things that is serious enough, and there are so many detailed possibilities of violations with the 18 different criteria for revocation. It seems to me that that, again, taking someone's livelihood away with the stroke of a pin, should at least have the council do a final review on that, and it should be done in a public hearing. So really, what I'm suggesting is that we replace the administrative revocation process with a council hearing revocation process. And so I would move to amend as follows. Motion to amend Section 4, Paragraph C by striking revoke or suspend and inserting recommend the revocation or suspension of, and striking proof by a preponderance of the evidence of, and in Paragraph D1 by striking the words intent and inserting the words the recommendation, and by striking city's intention and inserting licensing specialist's intent, and by striking Paragraph D2 and inserting, "The licensed specialist shall report his or her findings to the city council. The city council shall conduct a public hearing to make a final determination on the recommendation for suspension or revocation," and in Paragraph D3 by striking after all, by striking all after a suspension and will be for 30 days, and by striking all words after year in Paragraph D4, and by striking licensing authority and inserting city in the last sentence of Paragraph E, and by striking Paragraph F.
Second.
All right, motion by Breckie and seconded by Kylie on that. Is there a discussion on the council on that motion to amend? Counselor Sale, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After presented, was presented this, it dawned on me that it's an unfair burden in the way it's currently written on the licensing specialist, that a city councilor can be recalled or voted out, and this is the kind of responsibility we sign up for. So that's why I intend on supporting this.
All right, thank you. Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just think this cleans it up a little bit and gives the license holder better due process, that it takes them through the revocation process cleaner, and that is our responsibility probably from a policymaking board.
All right, other discussion on this amendment? All right, let's vote on it.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Other amendments to make?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. I'm going to start with the, it's the amendment labeled Licensing No Cap Amendment. I would move to amend Section 3 by striking Paragraph B2 and in Section 4, Paragraph A3A, by striking all words after apply and inserting for the initial issuance of dispensary licenses, and by inserting the word first after the word dispensary in Paragraph A3B, and by striking the second sentence in Paragraph A3F.
All right, that's going to fail for lack of a second, it sounds like.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor Starr.
I would move to amend, whoops, I get to the right one here. Move to amend Section 5 by striking Paragraph D and relabeling subsequent paragraphs in the section accordingly. This is labeled Licensing Sign Restrictions Amendment that the clerk has.
Second, Breckie.
All right, motion by Starr, seconded by Breckie. Counselor Starr, you want to unpack that?
Yep, absolutely, because I'm going to cut to the chase, and this will be probably the last one that I'll do. My goal is, when we start deciding what words are objectionable and start with the sign ordinances and sign restrictions, where do we stop? And we stop in a small place, saying marijuana, saying, you know, different symbols and different things. And I'm not excited about how the community is going to change in signage and things, but it doesn't make sense to restrict marketing and advertising and stopping at a small one. A friend at Coffee made the comment, you know, when you ban the first book, you got to keep going. And I had a couple of other amendments that would move it around, and this is the, as far as I'm concerned, what makes sense is to just strike this entire section. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Starr. Discussion on the council on this one? Counselor Erickson?
I had a question about how, I mean, we, as a council, have discussed signage for a long time and how that's applicable to what we can and can't do, and how we can restrict it. And so I had a question about this, and the way that it was explained to me, and City Attorney Coystro, you correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't want to misspeak, but the reason why we are allowed to do this is because it's not a federally recognized drug. And that's why we can restrict this potentially, the way that the signage is. Because I didn't know if it was even something, I was confused. I had no idea that that was even an option or something that we could look at. I see this as, I see this amendment as unneeded. I don't really see the testing facilities having a big plant outside and drawing attention to their facility. I think that there's ways to advertise it. The whole thing, in my opinion, is a phased approach, and we really need to kind of step through this cautiously and carefully. We can always unpack it later, we can always expand it later. And so for me, I just really want to take that kind of phased approach.
All right, thank you. Counselor Breckie, go ahead.
I'm going to support this amendment, and the reason is because when I checked into the backdrop for it, what I learned was that there was all kinds of prohibitions out there to different kinds of things. And some ordinances apparently had lists and lists of kinds of things that were prohibited. And then there was some that just said, you can't do anything except have a universal symbol. And to me, we just kind of plucked this out of the middle of all of these in sort of a middle-of-the-road thing. And for me, I'd rather either just ban it all and have the universal symbol if we're worried about tastefulness, and just have a universal symbol, say you can only use this, and then, or just leave everything in place. So what I'm objecting to is this kind of middle-of-the-road approach and just picking two kind of random and arbitrary things and saying, those are the only two words you can't have. So I'm going to support the striking of this, and if we were interested in just going to a universal, look, I mean, that would, you know, that would be something I would take up. But just kind of, you know, dropping something in that doesn't really have any logic behind it is just, I just, I can't support that.
All right, thank you. Counselor Sale?
Counselor Starr, I have a little, this is the Licensing Marijuana Sign Amendment, is that correct, or am I on the wrong one?
It is. If you give me just a second, I'll pull it up.
Sign Restrictions.
Or is it, yeah, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right one that you...
I believe it is the best.
It's the one that deals with the word marijuana.
Correct. So rather than going back and striking the word marijuana or adding additional words that we may find objectionable, the goal was to just remove it altogether. And again, I think Counselor Breckie made a good point about, you know, where do you stop? You know, is marijuana enough to protect our city from, you know, objectionable signage? You know, it would be similar to putting in our side in ordinance that you couldn't use the word casino for video lottery casinos, because we're uncomfortable with the way that is. And so, like I said, my intent is, this is going to be the only amendment that I'll make to either strike the whole section or leave it.
Mr. Mayor, the amendment that you read was the one that reads Sign License, or excuse me, License Sign Restrictions Amendment?
Yes.
Okay, that's the one that we're on?
Yes.
Where it strikes the whole D.
Right.
So he skipped, because we've got a list of several, so he skipped over the marijuana sign amendment, and he's on License Sign Restrictions Amendment, is what was read into record.
Thank you.
All right, is there other questions or discussion on this amendment here? All right, seeing or hearing none, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Kylie?
No.
Knightzert?
No.
Selberg?
No.
Sale?
No.
All right, that amendment's going to fail six to two. Are there other amendments to introduce for this? Okay, so we're at the main motion as it's been amended several times here. Do we have any final discussion on this main motion as it's been amended? I'll start with Counselor Sale and then Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What you've seen over the last months and what has been brought tonight is effort by all the council members, the administration, and the public to try and come up with the best possible solution we can to the issue before us, and that's to regulate marijuana and be reasonable and respect the will of the voters. Now, it's not been easy, and sometimes it's a little messy, but I honestly think that it's probably the best we can do at the point we're in right now. So that's why I'm going to vote for the whole package as we go forward. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree completely with Counselor Sale here next to me. We heard tonight, and no, even the state, as of last Friday, promulgated new rules on this. This will be a work in progress, I'm certain of it. It's a whole new code of ordinances for the city of Sioux Falls, and I want to commend Counselor Knightzert, the city attorney, the mayor, chief of staff Beck, the task force that was put in place, and it was a great job. And like anything that's voted on, with a majority of the council supporting the amendments, it's going to change over time. This is a way for us to phase in and see how all of these different industries are impacted throughout the city and throughout the local joint jurisdiction areas, as well as these other cities throughout the state. I think this is a balanced approach, like we've talked about the entire time and discussed over the past, well, seven months now and longer. So I appreciate the work that we've done here and look forward to supporting this and moving forward so that individuals in this city will have access to their medical marijuana.
Thank you, Counselor. Other discussion on this packaged ordinance? Go ahead, Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I mean, it is a balanced approach. It is a bit, it's a conservative approach on many respects, but it's going to continue to evolve. It will be a work in progress. I'm sure it's things that we will be tweaking and visiting, coming back to this time and again here in the upcoming weeks, months, years, that type of thing. So the compromise, I think the council has all done their best. Again, we've all, some have come this way, some have come this way. We've been on the phone for, I can't even imagine how many hours, I can't imagine how much homework some have done, and I think we all have, and that's, some are, like, got to be hundreds of hours on a couple of you. I just think everybody's kind of put their heads together, done the best they can, and again, I think it will continue to ebb and flow, and we'll be visiting it again. But I do think everybody on this council did a really good job of working together and trying to grind out a compromise, which we did tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Breckie?
I would just like to thank my fellow council members for working with me to help me deal with some of the legal and policy issues and questions that I had about this. I did do a deep dive into it and, you know, really read it line by line. I still have multiple concerns about it, but these really were the ones that troubled me the most, and I appreciate my fellow council members' support on the amendments that I made, and I am committed, you know, to, you know, trying to work through some other issues but of lesser concern than these two. So thank you, everyone, and I am committed to dealing with some of the other issues that I think are still out there, both minor and, you know, particularly, I just, you know, want to reach out that I do think that we really need to have more discussion in a timely fashion, you know, on the cultivation/manufacturing issue. I need, that's just a big issue hanging out there, and we just kind of summarily dismissed it, and it kind of got lost in the, you know, in the discussion. But I think in the near future, we need to kind of, you know, really kind of start having a dialogue about that.
Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. I do want to just, in my mind, set the record straight here a little bit. Over the last several weeks we've had, it's been asserted that practically all the testimony that's been presented did not support the work that this council has done or the proposal that was brought forward previously. And that's true, the testimony that was presented at our evening meetings. However, it was, in stating that, it was meant, I interpret that as it was meant to mean that the whole community felt the same way. And I don't believe that is necessarily the case. The vast majority of the people that presented during public input on this were representatives of the cannabis industry or individuals that wish to become a part of the cannabis industry, not necessarily as a community as a whole. Now, I'm not saying that to denigrate what you said, because I listened, and that's part of the reason why I was trying to bring the amendments forward. I'm just trying to let the public know that that's not necessarily representative of what we have heard. Quite frankly, I have had very, very few, basically a handful of emails on this topic from individuals that were not connected to this particular topic. So I greatly appreciate the testimony that was given. We did listen, and that's why we brought the amendments forward. We're, as I mentioned, we're trying to reach a compromise. Quite frankly, I, it kind of hurt me to agree to some of what I voted on here this evening, but I think if it doesn't hurt, then you're not compromising. So, but anyway, I just wanted to make the point about this being representative of the community as a whole. So thank you very much.
All right. Any other discussion on this amendment, then? Or, excuse me, this ordinance has amended? Then let's vote on the main motion, please.
Councilmember Starr?
No.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to one, and I want to take a point of personal privilege to thank the office of the attorneys who have put in hundreds of hours on this, not just Stacy, but Paul Bangford, Ryan Sage, Keith Allenstein, Karen Leonard. It's been a big, heavy lift for them. Counselor Knightzert, this has been a lot of work for you as well. We've spent a lot of time researching this issue, so to ever imply that we haven't talked to other cities or communities and done a lot of research is just simply not true. It's been hundreds of hours that our offices spend on this to ensure we've done this right. So Stacy, to you and your staff who have bore the brunt of a lot of this work, I just want to thank you from my office, so thank you. We'll move on then to item 43.
Item 43 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 40 Administrative Code Enforcement, sponsors the mayor.
Stacy, you want to speak to this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So Ordinance 40.999 lays out civil penalties for the entirety of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Sioux Falls. Chapter 121 was actually dormant, and this licensing, the ordinance that was just passed, does apply per STCL 34-20G for civil penalties in certain limited circumstances. And so this is essentially an administrative slash cleanup ordinance that ensures that this is included in the table of contents for those ordinances that are subject to potential civil penalties.
All right, thank you, Stacy. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item, 43? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Stacy on this one? All right, look for motion.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Any discussion here? All right, let's take a vote, then.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Move to item 44.
Item 44 is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing appropriations authorizing increase in property tax revenue pursuant to STCL 101335 and the means of financing for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022.
Sean, what are you still doing here?
Good evening, Council Mayor. So tonight is the first step in the adoption of the citywide budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Over the course of the last month, we've had a series of budget hearings and as well as other conversations with you as a council. So we're thankful for the opportunity to work with you as we work through this process. The two items that are on the agenda this evening is the first reading of the appropriations ordinance as well as the public hearing for the budget. Next week will be second reading of the appropriations budget and then adoption of the budget as well as the five-year capital program. So the total city budget is six hundred and fifty-four point two million dollars as it was originally proposed. The appropriations ordinance covers the, primarily the tax-supported funds. So the actual appropriation that is covered by this, this item is three hundred and thirty-nine point nine million of that total budget. This also incorporates the property tax assessment for two thousand and twenty-two, which is just shy of seventy-four million dollars. And that is, property taxes are fully dedicated to the general fund, which is used for operations for the city. That includes a one point two percent CPI adjustment. As we went through this budgeting process over the course of the last month or so, there was a series of themes that were brought forward. And the reasons why we highlighted them is to kind of tell the story of what the priorities were as part of this budgeting process. And if you think back sixteen months ago, where we were at and, and thinking that one of the themes would be scaling for growth at a time when we were trying to figure out how much revenue we were going to lose, we've done a complete one-eighty from where we were. And now we're kind of in a position as a community as we reflect on all the external factors of looking at what all this growth over the course of the last really eight to ten months means to our community and are we as a municipal government prepared strategically to be able to address that, to address that growth in the way that many of our residents have come to expect? And so other themes that were part of developing this budget was connecting people with community because ultimately, the role of municipal government is to provide core government services that can't be provided by the private market. And we want to ensure that what we are doing is connecting with the priorities of the residents in our community. And then lastly, investing in today for a better tomorrow and keeping our eye on the long term and making strategic investments that will have a long-term rate of return for our community as we look to address some of those growth factors. And really, some of those core areas revolve around investing in our people, in our workforce of our city because they are a primary factor in the success of our organization to be able to address those community needs. Investing in technology because people are expecting that our government will keep up with the rapidly changing world around us and will adapt and leverage those innovations as part of the way we do business. Investing in infrastructure to make sure we have the sound basis for which we can grow economically. And also investing in those cultural and recreational assets that our community has come to expect and are part of the reason why people want to move here, which we've very much seen in the last year because it is a good place to raise a family, but also it is a great place to start a career or to own a business. All of that is done with a slant toward financial stewardship with prioritization set forth in the ones Sioux Falls framework. Ultimately, we have a responsibility to ensure that the allocation of our budget resources align with the community expectations, ensuring we continue to have rapid emergency response, safe neighborhoods, increased recreation opportunities, and reliable utilities. As we look at that budget for six hundred and fifty-four point two million, it really breaks down into three buckets. There's operations, there's capital, and then there's the internal service funds. And before I move on to talk about those primary operations and capital funding, just to speak, just briefly about the internal service funds. In general, when it comes to internal service funds, they are generally double-counted within our budget. So they are already part of the operating, the capital budgets, but they're set aside, as you're aware, for the different internal funds to ensure that we have the resources for insurance, risk, investing in centralized facilities, and investing in technology. If you remove the internal service funds, the actual expenditures are five hundred and forty-nine point seven million dollars. To really get a feel for what services we're providing and what that all comprises, this chart breaks it down. But as you take a look at this, seventy-five percent of our operating and capital services go to essential services such as water, water reclamation, highways and streets, and public safety. Those four categories alone make up over seventy-five percent of our budget. As a city, we only spend seven percent on support services and tax-supported debt combined. So a fraction of our governmental is, is really on those general administrative support functions as well as our debt service related to sales tax debt. Lastly, in closing, we kind of closed the same way we began in some of the areas that as we look back, planning, balancing, and adapting, financial stewardship, we would not be in the position that we were coming out of the pandemic if we hadn't had years of financial stewardship with the, with this city. And that includes having a strong working relationship with the council and making wise decisions in how our financial resources are allocated. We do, we have talked about one-time funding priorities. Over the last month, we talked about Sioux Falls for All, working with the council to allocate some of those one-time resources. The council took action a few weeks ago on the two thousand and twenty-one side of that in terms of supplements. But there will be some additional motions required in order to insert those into the city's two thousand and twenty-two budget as well. And then lastly, the budget itself, while we look at it as numbers, as you can see from our budget book, we, we tried to do more of the storytelling and the why as opposed to just showing the numbers. Because ultimately, it's more than just numbers. It's a statement of what we're trying to do as a community, the things that we're trying to accomplish in terms of scaling for growth, connecting with people with our community, investing today for a better tomorrow. These themes drive the operations and strategies for each of our departments as we look forward into two thousand and twenty-two and beyond. And with that, I will be happy to answer any remaining questions you have today or over the course of the next week before final adoption next week.
All right. Thanks, Sean. First, go to public. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-four tonight? All right. Not seeing any. Counselors, questions for Sean tonight on this first reading? Counselor Knightzert, go ahead.
Not a question, just a comment. To, to your point, I, I think the, the narratives that, that are in here and then the callouts of some of the highlight numbers and the pictures really makes it much more accessible for everyone and I appreciate that. And so it's, it's just intimidating for anybody to look at a book that's, you know, two hundred pages of just numbers and lines. So I, I think it's more accessible to the average person.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Sale, seconded by Jensen to approve forty-four. Send that to a second reading on Tuesday, September fourteenth. Discussion on the council here? Go ahead, Counselor Sale and then Counselor Jensen.
I just would really like to thank Mr. Pritchard for all the work that he did and his timely answering of the hundreds of questions that came from the council. We really appreciate, I think it was a smooth process this year and it's because of you and your staff and our council staff that made it work. Thank you.
Counselor Jensen?
Thank you. Couldn't agree more with the counselor again to the left of me. But what I'll tell you is this is a year-long process and you've taken input from us all. Every director has. And sometimes Sean and, or Erica is the lead person on it, but it gets disseminated and the discussions are had. And if you look at the breakdown by department, you know, you have twenty-seven point seven percent of it in water reclamation. People want that to work in the city of Sioux Falls and we're going to invest in it. So thank you, Director Cotter, for making that happen. Highways and streets are the second biggest budgetary item. And, you know, there are people that ran campaigns for smoother road ahead. I think you're doing a great job, Mayor, in, in making that a priority. And, and it, it just shows what we prioritize from a city and from a city council. Then what you see is you have police, water, fire, absolute necessities in our city government. And those will be things that we continue to invest in and sponsor. And then after that, you have other stuff as well, but you have parks. You have something that we are going to set ourselves apart from places that are unsafe and places that don't have the amenities that we have as a city. And if you're looking for different values than what you see prioritized here, you, you're not going to get that out of me or our city staff as it is today. So get ready for a lot of this in the upcoming years. And thank you very much, Mayor and, and staff for making this happen.
Thank you, Counselor. Other discussion on this before we vote? Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
I was just going to say that this is the first reading, so there are at least three of us. Counselor Jensen, Counselor Sale, and myself will be bringing amendments next week to certain areas of the budget that have actually already been addressed in previous discussions and, and presentations. So those amendments will be coming.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. All right. Let's take a vote on this motion to send this to second reading next week on the fourteenth.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. We'll move to item fifty-one.
Item fifty-one is a public hearing for a proposed resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two and the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-six capital program.
So this is essentially just a public hearing for the budget resolution. So it's not up for consideration. There's no vote on this. It's purely a time to hear from the public. So if there's, if there's people who want to speak on the budget resolution, you can come up for that. And seeing that we just had that opportunity, I'm going to guess that's a pass, so there's no action to take on that. So we will move on to new business. Any new business from the council tonight? All right. Not hearing any. We'll move to public input then. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person. And during general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that we didn't cover tonight. So anybody for general public input tonight? Come on up. Good evening.
Okay, so I'm going to tell you how y'all went for crime in those areas. Pettigrew, Whittier? I got the call volume down fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-one from last year in Pettigrew. You police your neighborhood, you get the police on board, you raise hell, you get landlords on board. If not, you get them to sell and move them out of the neighborhood. This is what you do on crime. So since Chief Burns is out, we'll get more cleaned up. Pettigrew, I just told him, tonight, you can do the same thing in Pettigrew. Get people on board, get the police on board, get your neighborhood association on board and clean it up. Right? That's what we can do. Fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-one calls for service down. That's a fact. Call Chief Toome. I got the report. Four calls a day, one hundred and twenty-three calls a month. We can't control the neighborhood. This is what I'm telling you. When high crime poverty, poor neighborhoods get the back end of everything and the rich people get more. I have spent hours and I got paid for it to keep that, and I'm still going into that neighborhood and keeping crime down, still testifying against criminals in the court system, still putting them to prison. And we cleaned up Eleventh and Summit, Eleventh and Duluth, and Eleventh and Prairie. What the hell has the council members done in this district? Not a darn thing with crime. And I sure don't want a superhero award for it. Now, again, I got power. Thirty-nine-hundred people, eight-hundred-and-fifty-two properties. And I'm sitting here and telling you now that we want our roads fixed. South Kurtstown, you're in Central. We want our roads fixed. It looks like Bagdike hit it. We have potholes, rich peoples complaining. I wasn't voted into Pettigrew for politics. I wasn't voted into Pettigrew to be a brown-noser and stick my nose up people's buttholes. So I'm telling you, we need the city out there on Eleventh and Summit, Eleventh and Prairie, Eleventh and Duluth. We got Volatiles of America complaining, spent millions of dollars. Castello Properties complaining, spent millions of dollars. Should I go on of who's supporting me and backing me up when I come to city council and y'all sitting here laughing and thinking that it's a joke? Because we could talk about politics and power. They want their roads done. They want the city to come out there and fix those potholes. We shouldn't have to be the last ones to do it. I will continue to fight crime in the neighborhood if the police like it or not. It's their job.